Welcome everybody to the Carlisle School Committee meeting of Wednesday, February 13th. This meeting is being videotaped by our volunteer. Thank you very much. It is available later.
Yes, via YouTube. You go to cockerTV.com I think, dot org I think, I'm not sure. It's somewhere in Facebook and email me, I'll tell you.
Okay. All right. Before I open for public comments, I do want to make a statement. And I will read it. Everyone who is in this meeting tonight, whether a salaried professional, an unpaid volunteer, or a concerned parent, although I don't see any concerned parents yet, is here because of one thing: we care deeply about the education of our children. In January 2018, the school committee's negotiating subcommittee, which also includes representatives from the CPS administration, town government, and Carlisle's Board of Selectmen, began contract negotiations with the Carlisle Teachers Association. One of the ground rules of our negotiation process was that, and I quote, "There will be no public disclosure or discussion of proposals or conduct of the meetings and negotiations, nor any disclosures to print or electronic news media until either party or both parties jointly seek the assistance of a third party to resolve a negotiation dispute," end of quote. While it is public knowledge that we have engaged a third-party mediator to assist us with the negotiating process, the subcommittee has opted not to discuss details of the negotiation outside of school committee executive session. We know that everyone wants to see a successful resolution to the issues, and that nobody is enjoying how long the process is taking, but we are, speaking for us, continuing this negotiation in good faith and ask you to respect that position. With that being said, I open the floor for public comments. Ms. Linda Benaria.
Thank you. My name is Linda Benaria. I am a second-grade teacher here at the Carlisle School, and I am the president of the Carlisle Teachers Association. And I'm sorry, my back is, no wonder to anyone else there.
You want to be near enough to the microphone, though?
Oh, I'll have my teacher voice. Thank you. I wish that I could be here tonight to present the great work of the Carlisle students and teachers. I wish that on this raw evening, the staff that are here tonight could be at home working on their lessons or spending time with their families. Unfortunately, I am here this evening to share with you that the members of the Carlisle Teachers Association are disheartened that we have continued into February without a contract. We have been in negotiations for 14 months. It is inexcusable that the faculty and staff of the Carlisle School do not have a contract and have not received a cost of living increase this year. Yet, our faculty comes to Carlisle each day, committed to supporting our students academically and emotionally, just as we always have. Our staff continually participates in professional development. Our staff is trained to keep our students safe. Our staff dedicates evenings and weekends, creating enriching, innovative curriculum and fun activities for our students, such as Model UN, outdoor ed, trips to Washington, and the celebration of Chinese New Year. Our staff devotes hours in helping students think beyond their Carlisle School community to care for those who do not have the same advantages they have. Our staff is dedicated to educating the whole child. Our staff has asked for a modest increase in our salary package. Our staff deserves this increase. Our staff deserves your respect and your support. As a school committee and the largest employer of the town, it is your responsibility to support your staff with a salary that is fair, justified, and competitive. It is your responsibility to support your staff and not add undue stress to your staff. The continued lack of a contract and a lack of respect and support has created a stressful situation for your staff. Adding to our stress is your goal, to look into restructuring the highly successful middle-school model. Conversations around this subject have led to speculations around changing this effective model that we, as the educational professionals, know is best for all of our middle-school students. These conversations also suggest the possibility of reducing staff. The mission of the Carlisle Public Schools is to provide a collaborative and caring community in which each student is known, understood, and valued, so that students can learn to their fullest potential in a safe, inclusive environment with high expectations and clear standards for all. As educators, this mission guides everything we do for our students. We believe in this mission and know that the T-model we have in place is the, sorry, best approach for meeting all of our students' needs. It is the school committee's responsibility to support your experienced, dedicated, and caring staff. Please settle this contract with a fair, reasonable request we have put forward. We look forward to meeting with the mediator on February 26th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We'll move to the review and approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 9th.
I'll make the motion for thirty minutes of the ninth, January 9th.
Second. Did you, this is the updated list of statements from...
The updated ones are attached.
Can you direct us to the portion of...
For the changes, for the change...
They're updated solar, especially...
Are they substantive?
Um, they're... They were reminded for exceptions.
Since you're the resident expert, it sounds reasonable. Comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We would also like to approve the negotiating subcommittee minutes for 12, 6, and 11, 30.
January 3rd.
Are you allowed to move it? Since it was just you and me, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The first item of business is the, an update on the performing arts studio. Is there a project update? I don't know that there is.
I gave an update on where we stand presently. So, right now, we are working with TBA Associates, the architectural firm, Justin Humphries from the firm. We're at a stage now where we have to set up a meeting with Kevin, and Rob, and Sue, and myself, so that we can really go over the specs of what we're looking for in the project, and then Justin and the firm can develop the RFP to hopefully go out in April. That's the intent. His timeline has been a little slower than the timeline you were hoping for, so he's hoping to go in April and get bids back in June, and possibly start at the end of, the beginning of August, which would put us into the fall, which is not best case for us. So, we're still waiting to have our next meeting so that we can look at that timeline and see if we can advance it, because we would like to have a project take place during the summertime with students out in the building, not disrupt the classes and the gymnasium within downtown. So, that's the update on where we stand presently with the project, but I think Sarah also had a question.
So, just on the project, it's not a very long project, right? Three weeks or something? So, is that all you have?
I think two, looking at two months.
Two months, really?
Two and a half months.
So, can you realistically draw it in, close?
Well, we're hoping that they get the bid documents in order earlier, so that they want to bid sooner, so that we can get the contractors to make the bid, so they can get the project rolling. His timeline's a little later, but it's really going to, we're going to have to have a number of additional conversations, because it might not work for us to do it in August, September, October.
And if you can't pull it in, would you wait till...
Yeah, is it summer?
The following summer?
This summer or next summer?
I think we would, yes.
Right. Okay. Wendy?
Hopefully before the end of March.
Is it, so, we consider too disruptive to have a construction project going on during the school year?
Well, that's what we have, we have to have a better understanding of what the construction project will entail and what kind of access people will need to that area, because it's right outside the gymnasium. So, we have all the classes that go down there and into the recreation room, so it could be fairly disruptive, not to mention the parking lot. And then we have to also look at how we can synchronize that with any other projects that may be taking place in that general vicinity over the next few months.
Have you looked at, if there might be next December, opportunity, if not complete the project, at least you do those aspects of which are intensive of surrounding areas, intensive of surrounding areas during that time, minimizing the impact? Have you considered that?
We haven't verbalized that, but I'm glad you did, so we will put that down for consideration tonight.
All right. Separately, related to the project, but not construction, Sarah Wilson had requested that we consider two options on naming rights and signage. I don't quite get these two options. One is a plaque recognizing contributions of $500 and more, so it's not really two options, I think it's two levels. A plaque recognizing contributions of $500 or more, and secondly, offering naming rights for rooms to really big donors, not sure what level will be, but around 10 to 15K. So, we are actually going to take up the facility naming policy for a vote, but since we've already discussed it, you can refer to it in your package and we can discuss it briefly and get a sense for what the feeling of the committee is with regard to the naming. And the naming right thing is towards the back of the package.
So, I think what she's proposing, I mean, it sounds fine to me, but I'd certainly like her to come back with more detail when she's got it.
Right, and I think that's true, but, so if we had, I think her reason for writing now is to kind of get a sense of where the... If we say, like you said, it's fine, just give a specific, so it's fine. If we say, no, 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 you can't do that, then I don't think she wants to promise people or anything.
Right. But has she, has she specifically looked at the policy, so she knows the parameters there, or we should...
She's aware of it, but I don't know that. I could direct, we could direct her to the policy, in any case.
David, I wanted to float some guidelines we might propose to her, as opposed to simply saying, we'll propose something and then we'll go it up or down.
Yeah.
And from my perspective, the general idea sounds nice, but perhaps if she could combine any plaques onto a single larger plaque, state the dimensions of that larger plaque, and state where it would be placed, those would be the specific things I'd like to see in a, in a response.
Well, I think, I think, it sounds to me like there is only one plaque, right? And then there might be the Josh Kevlatsky, usually, outgoing.
A plaque recognizing contribution of $500 plus. Is that a single plaque or a plaque for each contribution of $500?
I'll clarify, but my impression is it's one... Okay. Do I have a McMorro plaque already? If you give 10,000 to 15,000?
No, he can't, because he's not a school committee coordinator.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. No, but next year, next year.
He's got to wait a year.
Nancy, will you send the policy revote to me, to Sarah? And I'll follow up with an email to her as well. All right.
I mean, this is a tract, this is a nice way for them to offer, or to send people to donate, so we don't want to discourage it.
All right. Are we, Nancy, are we dialing up Drew McMorro?
Yes. Christine's on it.
Christine's on it? Excellent.
I'm Ernest D. Knight.
So, we're in the process of calling Drew McMorro, who is chair of the REITCOM, and he is in Florida.
You can speak to him, David.
Drew, hi.
Hello.
How's Florida?
Nice and warm.
Good.
Just like here.
He's in a hotel room somewhere.
Right. Okay. Do you, what do you want to do here, Drew? Do you want to read, do you want us to read the proposed warrant language? How would you like to proceed?
Uh, hang on, let me just see. So, I think, you know, often with a telephone, it's hard, I can't read the room, and we'd be interrupting each other a lot, but I thought I might just spend a few minutes going through the warrant article and explaining it.
Sure.
And then take questions.
Great.
Drew, just so you understand, just so you can have a little sense of the room, there's the school committees here, as well as about 30 other people in the audience, and it's being videotaped and recorded, just so you're aware of that, also.
Excited.
Jim O'Shea.
All right. Hello, anyone? Did I know of many of you? So, the Recreation Committee has been working for a while on Spalding Fields, and as you're aware, I think, for a long time, that Spalding has been disprepared. And I think one of people have wondered why haven't we repaired it. I've spoken to Jim and Dave about this and various others, but the major issues are that it's not a small job to repair it. There are sinkholes indicating problems with the subsurface material, hydrology, drainage, grading, there are surface water problems, there are grading issues across the field, there's forest overgrowth, which has led to damaged grass, there are weeds and insect, and insect, insect infestations, and we're getting a problem of contamination by, of animal waste from water fowl, all of which are problems that accumulate into a really large problem. It's a bigger landscaping challenge than would be available from our routine, routine maintenance teams. So, knowing that this is a big endeavor to, because we really want to upgrade Spalding and make it back in great shape, and knowing that it has some challenges, including its history at the landfill site, we want to engage engineers to take a look at the subsurface and give us recommendations about these problems. So, at this point, I'll take you through the warrant language piece by piece here. So, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. We even report to the Board of Selectmen, so that is a, you know, if there's a different indication in that language that you'd like, please let us know, and I'll be taking notes from your feedback here. For an architectural and engineering site called Spalding Field for the purpose of planning future recreational use by the town and schools, how you would excavate soil cores and test it. Test issues related to drainage, that's what I've talked about in terms of solving the sinkhole problem. Architecting undersurface drainage system. Assess the risk of finding hazardous materials left from prior use of the site. I think, just to make a comment on this piece of the puzzle, there's a, I've heard the comment before, that are we afraid we might find something that we would have to deal with in terms of hazardous use? We don't think so, based on its history as a construction landfill, but in any case, if there is something there, we can't really go sending construction crews into it without knowing that, because we would, you know, create a lot of potential liability for the town in doing that. We would scope any needs for variances or other permitting issues related to new field construction, so that gets into the fact that the site is very close to a wetland. We'd have to understand, you know, what our rights and limitations are for construction. I think that the last time that this field was constructed would have been under a very different regime of environmental management. Make recommendations related to field configuration, solar radiation, use, and maintenance plans. That speaks to the issue of what kinds of fields would fare best there. One of the things that would be on the table, I think, and subject to the advice of experts is whether or not such a site is actually suitable for clay surface, essentially baseball and softball fields, because of the wetland and because of the topology. As you know, it runs down a hill toward the wetland, which may mean that the advice will be something else that holds the turf, that holds the ground together better, best for the long-term use of it. Make recommendations for tree and foliage setbacks for solar coverage, so grass can grow. Recommend variations of grass, clay, or other materials, and assess the suitability of the site for some portion thereof, artificial turf. Our committee has for a long time been interested in seeing an artificial turf field built in the town. In fact, an effort like that some years ago barely failed here in Carlisle. In the meantime, I think a lot of us is seeing just how useful having some portion of the playing field, the artificial turf can be, because they can be used during virtually every season, and because they can bear the wear and tear the way that other fields can't. Having some piece of the puzzle be covered by artificial turf goes a long way toward making all the fields better. So, we want to see if the, this site, as part of this engineering site, you know, could meet the requirements for supporting artificial turf in light of, you know, proximity to wetlands. But none of that indicates that we would, you know, definitely do that, subject, of course, to a lot of different parties interested in the funding as well, but to assess whether or not that is a possibility, is the purpose of this article.
Great. Questions from the committee?
Happy to take questions.
Drew, this is Josh Kevlatsky. How are you?
Good.
Thank you for all your hard work on this and for many other things that you've done for this town. I did have a question, not specifically about the warrant article, but about a question it raises. You mentioned that the field had previously been used as a construction landfill. Can you elaborate on that, and during what years was it used, and what is believed to have been filled in the land there?
I don't really know, Josh. Others may know better than I do. It'd be, well, in the 60s and earlier, and I think it's, you know, the materials left over from, you know, perhaps construction of the original school, other buildings that were taken down. It's actually quite hearsay, more than, more than fact, as far as I know.
Thank you.
So, Drew, it's Mary. I'm wondering if, has this language been through town council, or is this just, you know, kind of the first pass at it? Like, what's the process for finalizing the actual warrant article?
That's a great question. I believe that town council will review it now. So, the initial deadline in January was, you know, to get the proposal in. I will tell you, this is my, this warrant article is written out of my amateur, you know, back-of-the-cereal-box law school work.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm guessing I know who helped with this.
Yeah.
Okay. So, no, no, so, and what's, what's the timeframe for getting things filed, the articles filed?
26, I think.
Of February? For town meeting?
Yeah, and then the printing is due by mid-March. But it's, we're less than two weeks from needing all the articles in, and approximately a month from needing the...
Preliminary deadline of next week, the finalization in March.
Do you, Drew?
So, I guess the question for us is, like, is there something else we would want this study to include, or maybe exclude some of these things? I don't, and I, is, and I don't know how to say this, other than to be blunt. Are we losing some control over this if we allow the selectmen of REITCOM to do a study? And does it get away from us?
I guess my view on that is, did you hear that, Drew?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that that's for me to comment on.
No, well, my comment is that I applaud the scope of the study, because one of my concerns when the prior issue with Spalding was raised a month or two ago with regard to community center slash fields, was that one couldn't possibly evaluate anything as elaborate as a structure on that field without doing this baseline work. And so, I think your approach is correct, that you really need to look at the geology and the topography and all that stuff, and determine, you know, what can that piece of land support? And you've added a lot of other things that are, seem reasonable to look at, so, from the standpoint of everybody getting on a good baseline of what's, of what's possible, I guess I like the study, and I think it's a necessary first step. Now, Mary brings up, you know, a follow-on, which is having had the study, then you're going to have a recommendation, and at that point, have we lost some control? And I guess my feeling is, I don't see why we would, and I'm glad somebody else is paying for the study.
Yeah.
Somebody else is our town, and so that's, so we're paying.
Some of us are disabled.
But I do, actually, riffing on what Mary said, if the field is under the domain of the school district, why is the money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to investigate?
That's, that was my question.
You're going to loop us into a $20,000 warrant article?
Well...
To your point, it's one town, right?
It's one town. The flip side of that is, who's going to be arguing for it? Are we, we may support it, but are we going to be pushing the argument for it?
I think that should direct that, Drew. What are you looking for from us tonight?
Oh, I don't, I mean, I don't know that I need anything yet, of course. You know, if we're to go forward to town meeting with that, a vote of support by the school committee would be, actually, probably not completely necessary, but I can't imagine this happening at town meeting without it. But I mean, by completely necessary, I mean legally necessary. To comment on the question about, you know, which organization's budget does this hit and sort of, you know, the scope of control, you know, the field maintenance and care has fallen under, you know, the recreation budget, falls under the general budget outside of the school committee budget, and so, that's why I proposed it the way I did.
Sounds good to me.
It just, it may be a good question for town council.
Right. Do you, Drew, do you sent, do you have support, in your opinion, at Selectmen?
Yes, I haven't met with them yet, but my liaison tell me they all think that this is a great idea, so.
Good. I mean, sorry, Nancy.
I don't have any questions or comments, I just want to say thanks for coordinating all of this and following through with this.
That's for Linda.
Yeah, and Christine.
And drop the U in Spalding. She was just, well, Linda gave me, and was just expressing her gratitude for all the hard work you've put in and out. I'll follow up with the same.
Thank you very much.
Drew, what is your confidence that 20,000 will cover the necessary studies, the requested studies?
I'm pretty confident it'll be actually lower than that. Part of the way I drafted the article, the scope of the work is all within the boundaries of a single firm's capabilities. There's actually one in Groton called Pine and Swallow that would be perfect for this, that I, we've done work with in the past in Concord, and I feel confident that it's actually underbid that level, so.
Thank you.
Hey Drew, one last question from Mary. The last, the last words are about artificial turf. Is that a generic term? I'm thinking of crumb rubber conversations we've had at the high school. Is artificial turf an appropriate...
Like elevator, or escalator. Is it a, is it a brand?
No, it's not a brand.
Well, no, I know it's not a brand.
There are different types of turf.
Yeah. Is crumb rubber an artificial turf? I don't know.
Something, some sort of fake turf, fake grass, but there are different variations of that.
I just, I'm so used to warrant articles being picked apart by legal counsel, that I want to make sure we get it right, that's all.
That's a good point.
I understand where you're going with it, let's just make sure we get it right.
Okay. Good. All right. Drew, you're welcome to stay on the line if you want to listen in on the...
Hang up on him.
...community center discussion, or would you like to go back to...
David, if I might just raise just one other issue that's come up in REITCOM, it'll take me just a moment to surprise the committee of.
Okay.
And that, you may have seen in the mosquito article, that for the first time in a long time, we are seeking to use some insect-control pesticides to deal with the grub issues on the fields. And I'm obligated to point this out to you and get your feedback on it, before this would happen, you know, sometime probably in May. And I just, I know this wasn't on the agenda, but, you know, I don't know if it's required, it's a key, if it requires a big full study, full committee discussion, but I did feel like the school community might want to have something to say in that we've been under an organic care plan for a very long time, with no pesticides, but we've lost control of the grubs, and we're proposing a different course.
Does the, thank you for raising that. Does the treatment, is it time-sensitive, as in seasonality, can wait till after the school year?
Wait till after the school year? Yeah, the application could wait, sure.
The fields will still get used during the summer.
Drew, a couple of questions for you on it. I haven't read the mosquito article yet, but does the proposed pesticide comply with IPM techniques?
Yeah, then we can give you the data sheets on the two chemicals that would be used, and they fall, they fall actually into the pest-based categories of classification, warning classifications.
I'm not sure it's still used, but years ago, when I looked into it, one of the treatments was parasitic nematodes. Is that still in use, and has that been considered?
We have been using them for two years, with no luck.
Thank you.
Not parasitic, no. Is the, the, are the treatments something that will degrade rather quickly? So, if it's applied and we, does it break down fast, get absorbed into the soil, and then, do they give a timeframe for that?
I couldn't quite make out all of that.
How long does the pesticide act for? How quickly does it break down?
How quickly is it, does it break down? So, there's two different ones. One would be a more robust initial treatment, to really kill off... One would be a more robust initial treatment to really kill off the grub, kill off the grubs. That chemical is dialox. I think it would be active for about a month or so, depending upon how much rainfall we get during that period. And then an ongoing treatment of a teleprint would keep them abated, is my understanding.
So can we table this and get more information to Rob? Because, I mean, we have this whole pest control policy and communication plan around this kind of stuff. We could get some more information, because obviously we've got to do something. Dave says, yes, that's a good idea.
He agrees.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention, Josh.
Yeah, but thank you for giving us a couple of minutes, because I didn't want you to be quiet.
No, that's great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to stay for the next conversation about the community center?
I think yes.
Okay, so on that last one, I'm sorry for the interruption. Are we going to take that up later?
Yeah, we're going to take it offline, because we've got to get information about what the treatment is and how we notify families and for the whole thing.
I also want to know what's the, what are the consequences if you don't use the treatment? What's happening to the fields as a result of the grubs?
So we'll, I, more information. Okay, let's move to community center discussion. And Jerry here? Did you want to come up? Hi, Jerry. Did you want to come up? Come on up. We have a seat at the children's table. What's on your mind?
Well, there is a proposal to use part of, well, there are two things. One regards Banta Davis as a possible site for a community center. And the other is some questions. Right now, recreation uses facilities at the school for various things. They use the gymnasium, they use the theater, they use the brick building. And there may be some other parts of the school that use various programs that I don't know about. The question in looking forward to what a community center would do is, can we count on the use of those facilities going off into the future? Or should a community center try to replace those? Do we want to put a gymnasium in the community center? Or can we count on using the gymnasium at the school for the foreseeable future?
Can I answer that question with another question?
I don't know. Can you?
Actually, it would be two.
Yeah. So there are certain facilities in the school that RecCom presently uses. Some of them are potentially interchangeable with other facilities. I don't know that we'd be able to say whether we can permanently commit to use of particular facilities not knowing what the list of required or used rooms and facilities is. So for example, a brick building may be used presently. Would community room suffice as a replacement for it? Perhaps there's no substitution for gymnasium. Maybe there is. But to understand what the needs are would help us to better address the, better answer the question of, can we count on that in our community?
And those are questions that I don't have answers for. These are all things that we're searching for the answers to.
So can I just give a little bit of background of why we're having this discussion tonight? The Chinaw grant allows us to do a feasibility study in town for what a community center might be used for. So that's where this is coming from. And an architect has been selected to start doing that work. What the committee is doing is gathering information and input from the various departments like RecCom, the COA, about how they would foresee using a community center. So one of the things that Jerry would like to begin to assess is, how does the school community see that they might envision using a community center facility, number one? And number two, as we start to piece that together and, you know, envision what it would look like, we'll start to see what kinds of building, you know, footprint would be, what kind of parking requirements there would be, what kind of outdoor space would be associated with it? And what kinds, how it would interact with the recreational complex that we have, athletics complex that we have. And those sort of things will start to inform where we might locate the community center. So two things. How does the school community envision they might use a community center? And secondly, would Banta Davis, for example, be a possible location where we could cite a community center?
So I'm hearing two different questions, and maybe they are intended to be two different questions.
Yeah, that's what I said.
But one, not two different from you, different between Jerry and you.
Okay.
Where I understood Jerry's question to be, RecCom is using some school facilities now. Can they plan on using those school facilities into the future? Your question was different, as I understood, to be, what community center facilities would the school want to use? And how would that integrate with school use? Those are really different questions.
It is, because I.
Both questions that we'd like some guidance on. The basic process here is we're trying to determine what should be in a community center best served here. We don't want to build stuff we don't need. We don't want to duplicate.
Redundancies, yeah.
We don't want to leave stuff out either. So we're trying to get our arms around all of the things that might possibly be in a community center without regard to where it is. First thing is, what services are we going to provide? And then either step two or step three is looking at all of those things and determining their costs and what we can afford. And another step is, well, where are we going to put it?
May I suggest that a reasonable way to approach this is to look at what the needs are of the school, of RecCom, of COA, and so on, potentially prioritize them, but come up with that list and identify which of those pieces are potentially solved in existing school facilities. Come back to this committee with that list and say, what can we count on before then we have an architectural plan?
Well, we pretty much have that list. And the things that I listed are the things that we know about that RecCom uses school facilities for. They use the gymnasium for several of their programs. They use the auditorium for some theater programs, and they use the rebuilding for after-school programs.
So some things like auditorium, there probably are few substitutes for, unless it's a very small gathering.
And there's a very, there's a significant likelihood that a community center would have something like a stage as part of a large room that could possibly take the place of the auditorium for the theater programs.
Okay. So, but within the school, if you need the auditorium, there's no, there's no real alternative for something that houses hundreds of people anyways. But for a brick building, there might be.
Yes.
So having a clarification on what the needs are as opposed to the current rooms used might position this committee, put this committee in a better position to answer whether those needs can be met in the future.
Well, I mean, that's something that we're working on, RecCom, to enumerate and clarify. The other, right now in town, there's the Clark Room that can handle some number of people. There's the school auditorium that can handle many hundreds of people. We're expecting that a community center would provide a room that would fall somewhere in between, but it would be significantly larger than Clark Room, but probably a lot smaller than the auditorium. And that would fill a niche in the community that we don't currently address.
Jerry, aren't you best served with the most flexible space you can?
Absolutely.
Right. So, I mean, I agree with the comments I've heard. I think, my understanding of the Chinaw grant, part of it is to be multi-generational, right? So you don't want to have it where it's considered a council on aging center and then the kids gravitate to the gym. That wouldn't serve that piece of social mission. However, a gym to me is similar to an auditorium, like Josh said. That's a big-ticket item that's sort of specialized. So clearly, we wouldn't want the town to have to replicate if we could accommodate. I think that's what Josh is saying. But, so absent, you know, five-on-five basketball games and large performances, that our school specialized space is well-equipped to handle and it's really a scheduling issue to make sure we can accommodate. It would seem to me that large reconfigurable spaces that could be any of a number of things would be well-served. Then if, even after that, there's spillage because there's too many classes and you still need brick or whatever. I mean, it's always been that way, right? But I guess, you know, my comment is, don't replicate the big-ticket spaces that we already own as a town. But definitely encourage, to the degree possible, that kids would want to go there. There's things they would want to do there and not feel like, well, that's, there's nothing for me here. I need to go back to the gym. Because while we might be able to accommodate them, it wouldn't serve that social mission of, you know, people going in the same place.
That's why we're trying to, with RecCom, to get an idea of what those kinds of programs are and what kind of space would best serve it. And I agree, the name of the game is flexibility, to design rooms that can be used for multiple purposes. That has some implication on what the floor material is, what the walls are, what the size is. The idea that has always been floating around is that there would be a great room that's quite large and can seat 100, 200 people, that would have dividers, at least one, maybe two, to divide it into three smaller or two smaller spaces that could be used independently for different purposes.
Drew, do you want to add anything?
Just that I wasn't really aware of the request about enumerating our needs, but I've taken note of it. We did have a discussion about this recently. And some of our priorities are facilities that don't currently exist in the community, like an outdoor pool, for instance, so.
So is it fit?
A community kitchen, for instance, something, you know, a place where you could have a program that involved, you know, cooking.
So I get, is it fair for this committee to say that we're not, are there any programs we would want to sort of kick out of the school as they exist today? Or are we?
I wouldn't want to kick them up, but I also couldn't commit to housing them in perpetuity without getting a list of what they are. And what the needs are.
Well, but Josh, they're not going to be able to, I mean, we build our buildings for hopefully 40, 50 years, right? So we're not going to know what the uses are, but we know that gymnasiums are specialized spaces for certain things. They're always going to be the need for that, and that's a very expensive and large project which probably shouldn't be replicated, given, you know, where we are.
Because the school is a town asset. We should treat it as so, right?
Right, exactly. But, so.
Town meeting and the auditorium. I would anticipate that to stay.
I mean, to me, it's more, you know, it should be a large, it seems to me you're already there, right? You need a large space, you need to subdivide, you want to have people feel.
If I, if I get to say a word, to be clear, we're not the ones asking the school to make a long-term commitment about the use of various facilities. We've always been very accommodating and good hosts. And we've had a long dialogue about the fact that the school is happy to host us, but might not always, you know, provide exactly the same facilities. We've been happy to have worked with you on that.
So did I misunderstand when I said there were two questions? Jerry's question was basically, what can RecCom count on from the district? And Melinda's question was, what does the school want from this new facility? Am I mistaken in that interpretation?
Yeah, I think those are two questions. What we're looking for is some guidance on what kinds of, what kinds of spaces ought to be in a community center to serve the needs of the community, either for programs that the school is running or programs that RecCom is running, or programs that COA is running, or programs that the Board of Health is running.
So Jim, let's put this down. Is there something that faculty or staff come to you to say, I'd really like to run this program, but I don't have the right space?
It's a broad question, because we're always tight for spaces, not like classroom space. So, yeah, there are people who say, I teach a class, and I need a space to teach a class, and we can't provide that space. But we could provide that even if it was at the center. So right now, I would say, outside of that, no, we're not lacking space to run programs.
So there's no specialized place?
No specialized space, in other words.
No specialized. And I'm not aware that, as Drew said, that Rec is, we have any problem with Rec using the spaces to date that they have used, as long as they're flexible.
But I think it's appropriate that they would ask. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I've been advised not to solicit opinions from our guests, the audience, but if any of the guests would like to volunteer an opinion, I'd be happy to listen and hear your opinion.
It doesn't necessarily have to be answered tonight, so.
No, but, well, yes, I know, right? They're in the planning process.
Yeah, to let the administration.
The planning process is not going to end tomorrow.
No, I know. If we think of it, we'll sort of.
We're soliciting ideas and opinions.
You're on the working group or somehow?
Yeah, so certainly there have been a lot of ideas, you know, good ideas that have been floated, like, you know, having an exercise studio, having, you know, the RecCom and the COA offices housed there. There would be the kitchen, a large space like this with a divider, kitchen access. But other things that have come up that have also been very interesting are, you know, for example, the idea of an outdoor pool. And the outdoor, you know, attached to the kitchen, for example, a concession window, so that concessions could be served, you know, for.
All right, let's stick to school committee stuff.
Well, this is where I'm going with this. This is where I, what I really kind of thought we were going to explore tonight and get a read from the school committee about the potential sighting of a community center. Because the committee came here to talk about Spalding as a potential site, and, you know, we gave feedback about that. And Mosley was the original intended spot, but now an idea has come up about, well, what about Banta Davis as a potential site? So, you know, if we're talking about the characteristics of a potential community center and some of these outdoor possibilities, then I think, looking at the sighting, it makes sense to say, well, how would it interact with an athletic complex like Banta Davis? You know, we would put a pool there, we have bathroom access from the outside, so there are games going on. People could go in and use the bathroom if the community center's not open at the time. Or a concession window, for example. So these are the kinds of things that, ideas that have been put forward. And I think that we just want to get a read about, you know, would Banta be a, exploring as a potential site?
And after you put out a couple of those good ideas, I think it'd be great if I had the opportunity to talk to our staff, because you identified a few things that maybe would be great additions for the schools to have access to at the community center.
I don't know that the committee's ready to take a position on that, but I'll give you some thoughts. We consider Benadere for other uses. And my sticking point was, that is the land on which, if we ever have to expand and build more school, we would have to do it. So whatever we do, let's not eliminate that possible use. Which doesn't mean, don't put a community center. It could be a perfect place to do it. Just do it such that if we have to put it on the school, we can still do it there.
So Drew, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
If you complete your Spalding study and you conclude from that study, kind of what kind of fields, to your earlier comment, maybe no baseball bier, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, sort of what number and type of fields would a Spalding land support? And then presumably, following that, you seek to get community approval for some project that builds those fields. You have that. And then when you look at the existing fields in the Banta complex and you overlay that onto the Spalding study, do you come out of that with a picture of the field needs and therefore the leftover areas where you don't need fields and could build stuff? Is that something that's kind of in your planning process or not?
Yeah, I don't have a grand plan about configuration. I know the following. Between Spalding and Banta, there is plenty of space for the kinds of fields and athletic facilities that the town needs. I think even with a community center located on Banta, there would still be sufficient space for all that they need. But it probably would, you know, between the two projects, whatever happens with Spalding and Banta, you know, and to create a reconfiguration project where some fields are being built into, you know, baseball and others are being converted into, you know, multipurpose fields. There is, as we know, there is more land at Banta that is indicated by the current footprint of the athletic field. There's undeveloped land up there that is, you know, accommodating even one, accommodating at least one, maybe two fields.
Melinda, you're planning? Melinda, you're planning, in the planning process, you're part of that as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, to Drew's point and to Josh's point, is there some kind of footprint identification for a potential school expansion if we need it? Is there anything on the tenure plans and all that?
Yeah, I thought that was, I know to mention.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
I mean, that was, to your point, Drew, Josh, that would be important to know.
Yeah.
Like, here's, we can reserve this spot in case we need.
Here's how the site would work if we had to put it on the school.
So, how does one get that on the radar of what? Is it Planning Board? I heard you know somebody on Planning Board.
Yeah, I'm not sure. How long ago was this a plan for the town?
Well, it's always been a plan, but I think the Planning Board or whoever does it has put out multi-year studies and things.
We call Melinda, it was, I don't know, maybe three years ago or so, that the town considered large-scale rental units.
Right, right.
On Banta Davis. And this committee, it turns, it ended up, I don't think we ended up having to voice it at.
Got overwhelmed.
Got overwhelmed anyways, but we, before that, had taken the position.
I have my letter. Everybody wants me to read my letter.
You're prepared. The committee, I believe, as I recall, took the position that we may not need it now, we may not need it 10 years, but we can't say in 20 or 50 years that the 600-person, 600-student campus will be sufficient, that the 600 students we have now on an 800-school campus will be sufficient, that we won't need another building. And that is the land that we have for that other building. So, whatever you do, and at the time it was rental, affordable rental properties, don't limit our ability to build the next school building there for the next generation.
So, let's do, we'll do some homework on this as well.
There is this upcoming master planning process.
Right, that's the one I'm talking about. Is it on that, I mean, you should somehow, who's responsible?
Well, I'm on that committee, other people are. There's somebody.
You're on that committee?
The, no, the steering committee, and then there's an advisory group, the larger.
Very large advisory. But that certainly should be something that's on their radar to take a look at.
Well, yeah, if you give me a name, I'd be happy to reach out, or if you want to do it.
Jan Corneal, right?
Jan Corneal.
She is the chair of the.
Well, she's the chair of the steering committee, but the actual planning committee and the consultants that will do the grunt of the work have not been hired yet. There will be a warrant article about that.
You know, I think it needs to be on somebody's radar screen, because it ties to what you want. We need to know, agree, I think we need to understand what we can reserve. And then, to Drew's point, there's probably enough room there, but it has to be the right part of the room, and then maybe it's okay.
One of the things that will come out of our feasibility survey is how large a footprint a community center will require, and we can look around at various places that it might be slated.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anybody looking back at the old Highland studies and what we talked about, potential uses and offerings out of Highland?
For what exactly?
For community center.
Community center.
Not to do it.
Has that been looked in?
No, I'm, when we talked about using Highland as a community center, we had all kinds of proposed uses. Has any of that been dug up?
It's been looked at over and over again. There are numerous reasons why Highland is not.
No, 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 not to use Highland.
What do you want to use it for?
When we studied Highland, we had a lot of proposed activities we could run out of Highland. So, out of any community center, there's.
There's some prior work, is what.
Oh, yes, sure. The idea of an exercise room.
Okay, so that's all been brought back, okay.
All of that.
I don't want to lose that history.
All right. I mean, this committee will take an action with you on, with you, Drew, on the grub control, so we'll figure that one out. And we'll also take an action to just coordinate with, is it, what's it called, the master planning, what's the name of it?
The community center?
No, the Jan Corneal.
Master plan.
That's the master plan steering committee.
Steering committee, okay. To at least put a pin on a map that says we want this in the.
And you should feel free to get in touch with me if there's any information that we can provide or share.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Drew. Have a good evening. Don't get sunburned.
Thanks, Drew. Thank you. Good night.
Bye. Okay, Melinda, the floor is yours for the solar projects update.
Okay. So, we have received new renderings from Amoresco. The discussion we had last time, and Jonathan, you talk us here from.
Hi, Jonathan. Welcome to come up.
Solar lease committee. Is anyone else here, Jonathan?
I don't want to say.
Okay, we can come on up.
Come on up.
So, you remember we talked about, they had some, and I think that Jim's going to be able to get that up on the screen for the agency, but in the meantime, this is what they sent. There's the solar, the solar array is proposed over the bus area, and then over the parking areas. There are four over the parking area and a large one over the bus area. This is part of the proposal. There's also proposed canopies at the transfer station. So, they sent some new renderings. The last time we met, we had some questions for them about parking capacity, water management. What else did we ask them about? References, maintenance, yeah. So, I did, we did receive references from them. David asked for references for people they worked with in the past, and I contacted those references, got very positive feedback about Amoresco. In fact, there were a couple of schools, school projects, and one of them said that they actually were working with them during the school year, and they were very responsive, very easy to work with. So, that was positive feedback. And I did ask the references about water management, what they decided to do about water management. And when I say that, I'm referring to putting gutters, you know, channeling the water, catching the water, and letting it run off, as opposed to just, you know, letting the water run off naturally where it would. So, they opted not to do water management, and they were all happy with the results.
Meaning, the people you talked to said it was okay. It wasn't like.
Yeah, yeah.
The Kowalski flood.
No, I mean, basically, the.
I get a memorial room and a flood.
The idea was that if you have the solar, you know, if you have no solar canopy there, then you're just getting rain on. So, the solar canopy provides some, you know, protection from the rain. And there are some areas where bigger drips might come through, because the panels are not joined, you know, there's space in between. So, so this is the first depiction of where they would go. And Jim can show the other renderings. I don't know if you can see that very well. Should we turn the lights off?
Sure.
For some of the. Yeah, so you remember they described it as sort of like a Y, so when the cars were parked, you know, heading in, it would be like this, and.
It doesn't puddle? The water doesn't puddle there or not?
No, it's open in between.
Yeah, it's open in between.
The intent of organizing it like this is so that snow and ice can't fall off on people, because it comes from the center.
But there's a gap in the center.
There is a gap in the center, but it's.
But can the snow, I hadn't even thought about snow. The reason roofs are peaked the other way, so that the snow goes away.
Right.
What happens if you get a lot of snow? Does it mess up the whole solar thing?
It's not a huge gap, so you wouldn't have big, you know.
No, I mean, that's.
Stops producing solar power until the snow melts.
Oh, okay. Yes. Are they structurally designed for 50 PSI, 50 PSI?
Yeah, they do this.
Okay, all right.
So, one of the questions that the committee had was about parking capacity. The engineer did get back with us and said that there would be not, there would be no change to the parking capacity.
Looking at this depiction, it would appear that the area that now, for non-school hours, partners for student pickup and drop-off, we have posts run through the middle. Is that a mistake?
Posts in the middle of what?
Six feet from the curb, all along the area by the motor factory. Is that a correct interpretation?
This one's.
This is the bus drop area.
This is the bus drop.
Yeah, where the buses stop, exactly. These here, yeah. So, the cars, right now, drive along here and stack up there.
Cheater parking.
Well, not even the cheaters, just the drop-off and pickup are the issue.
Oh, and so you pull up and you drop off your kids here at the stairs?
Oh, you're going to be six feet farther away?
Well, no, I'm not sure you can even fit a car in between there.
Why would you want to fit one? Just pull up and drop the kid off.
Pull up where?
Well, you're not staying, right? Over here.
Kind of where the buses just went.
So, you would back the whole thing out eight feet and drive in this area instead of that? Because often what happens is, these are, as you call the cheater park, are there. Then, there's a path around by the, where the sidewalk is, where the curb is, that people are very rarely.
So, would you prefer if the post was on the sidewalk? That would be better in your opinion?
Or even move the other side of the sidewalk? Now, we're only talking probably four or five posts. And look at this other diagram, it looks a little different. You can count how many posts are part of, are over it.
It's so dark.
This one.
It's the red one.
But these are rendered, they're going to come up with a specific.
Yeah, it looks like designing.
Maybe only four posts that are.
You shouldn't engineer it in this meeting.
I'm not seeking to engineer it. I'm concerned about posts. If they say, oh, no parking spots, or get rid of, no, but the area that is presently used to.
That's a good point. We like clarity.
Drop-off, there's that post in the middle of it.
We like clarity about the drop-off.
It does make problems for drop-off, and, because it looks like the buses won't be able to just pull out in any way they want and pull around. Like, they'll either have to back out, or they'll have to go in the domino if that thing comes from one side.
So, we have to establish a new bus configuration for when they're waiting for the kids to pick up and drop off the kids. Because right now, the way that they are.
Or set the posts in place that they don't interfere. So, we'll take this back to the Amoresco, right? And figure out exactly what they mean by where those posts are.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's been tackled by other schools, right? All these other schools.
Yeah, I do know there's a few constraints, and the area is very large. I believe they have a constraint that they can't get the posts more than 65 feet apart. And the area there is very large, and they may be running into that constraint, but I think Melinda and I can take this back to them and figure the details out there.
But the post could go on the sidewalk if the one would not congest the.
It sounds like it depends on the distance.
Oh, I see, you're saying the other posts are.
Right, right.
Okay. When would they, when would they go to the, what's the, I guess, what is the sequence of steps now?
So, what we're looking, so once this, this would be, you know, subject to engineering and design, obviously. So, the next steps, what we're looking at, and one of the things that's, it's sort of time-sensitive, is certain things need to happen in order for this, for us to realize this project. There needs to be a bylaw change to expand the solar overlay district to the school. There needs to be, we're working up a lease agreement with Amoresco, the town is, and a pilot agreement, which is payment and move taxes. So, the timeline, and the other thing is that there's an incentive program attached to this, and the sooner that we can basically get in on that incentive program, the better the financial benefits are.
If you back away from that, when do you have to do, what's the deadline of something to qualify for that?
So, once the, so, this is an interesting question, because there isn't a, there isn't a date, a hard date. What is happening is it's filling up, so people are applying to, you know, to get in, right? And then, once it's full, then it moves to block two. So, it's block one right now, and it's still open. So, the faster we, you know, move.
What's the considered opinion of Amoresco or whoever, maybe I should ask you?
It's a little unclear right now. It's not clear how fast the blocks are filling up. Our estimate and their estimate are somewhere between block three and block six.
The lower number's a better deal for us?
The lower number's the better deal for us.
So, move faster.
So, block one is almost full. The constraint on our side is, we need to get through town meeting, which changes the bylaw.
Right.
Then we need to get into site plan review, which has a certain number of weeks that, you know, the community needs to go through to actually review everything.
You can't do that in parallel, because you don't know if the bylaw will change.
Officially, we're not allowed to. We have to wait for the bylaw change. We could start it beforehand, but it's.
Well, I think there was an opinion that we could.
Yeah, we could start it beforehand.
We can't finish it.
We can't finish it before.
We can start and finish it the day after town meeting.
So, the first, so the first step was really hinging on, everything is hinging on, you know, reaching a lease agreement.
Right.
Reaching an agreement with them. One of the things that we talked about last time was that the parking lot at the school really needs to be repaired, and we would like to do that in conjunction with this project if it moves forward. And they're aware of that, and that is something that's being negotiated right now.
But you made it sound to me that that may impose a time complication, because others haven't asked for that? I don't know. Is that an unusual request?
I don't think so. It's under, you know, it's being discussed right now, and they're working on the lease agreement. So, when an agreement is reached, we can sign, the town can sign the agreement in advance of town meeting.
Yep.
So, it doesn't, basically, if it doesn't get passed at town meeting, it just.
So, tonight, we can vote, we are scheduled to vote, whether we approve to move forward, right?
Yeah, so.
So, if we do that, then that at least, that's a little piece, and then all these other steps come into play. Then, lease agreement, pilot agreement, et cetera.
Do we have any more checks, at which point we can say, now we don't make whether we can vote start, or is?
Site plan, site plan.
Yeah, site plan review will take into consideration that, and the engineering design process as well.
We don't waive any rights to object later by.
No, and I make, I make a motion, I make it right now, so that we know what we're discussing. I move that the school committee.
No, we'll do it later. We'll do it later. Okay, so, what I'm hearing is, you're saying your motion, it sounds like you'll bake in the right press.
Right.
Have oversight on the project.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks for the work, Jonathan and Melinda.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Shea, you want to tell us about.
I think I'll just give an update on our.
Mayday update.
On super technicals.
Yes, sir.
So, beside here, I identified four goals, and now for a while, the school committee voted to endorse those to us. So, the four goals are, the first one deals with student development.
Yeah?
I'm sorry. The first goal is to ensure a shared vision of excellence in instructional practices and student achievement among our instructional leadership team. Just Simon, myself, Dr. Mailer, Dr. Seidel, and Will Verbitz, our student services director, and we guys who are evaluation processes. So, so far this year, we've worked with the administrative team to identify and educate our evaluation responsibilities, make sure everybody knew the responsibilities, and develop the benchmarks. So, just make sure that we knew who was evaluating whom, and when those were expected to take place. We had some difficulty last year, so we wanted to make sure that we were on, everything was fine this year. We also conducted evaluation workshops with the administrative team to calibrate our own feedback to teachers, to support their professional growth and our own professional growth.
May I ask a quick question, Jim?
So, at this time, all required observations have been completed. If you look at the number of observations required over the span of the full year, are they evenly distributed in time, or are they packed more in the spring? You know, have you completed them all because they're all required, because they're all done in March, or because you're on track?
We're on track, because they're bent, depending on where you are in the two-year, one-year professional status, you're required to make some observations. If you're a non-professional status person, you need to have observations both between September and January, and then between January and May. So, we want to make sure we take care of those. But if you're a professional status person, then you need to have an observation during the course of the year.
At one time. And have half of those been done, basically?
I won't say in a carpet state where the half of them have been done. Some people have done more than others. So, like, so let's say Dr. Mailer is new, and part of his job is getting into classrooms and making, so he's been in a number of classes doing the ramps, where you might find Will or Dennis, they go into classes, and maybe they haven't written them up as observations. And then, we also have, if you're a non-professional status person, you should have a formative assessment. So, that means you meet with your supervisor and look at how you've progressed on your goals to this date, and you get some feedback on that, and then look at how you perform on the standards, and you have a conversation about where you are and how you feel. And you get some feedback on that, and then look at how you perform on the standards, and you have a conversation about where you are and how you feel. So we are, at this point in time, we are, we are on track, so that's, that's the positive piece there. And we're happy to recall we have outstanding faculty and staff doing the great stuff. Next one was family and community engagement, and a professional practice goal for myself. So engaging parents, families, community members in the work of the district by providing opportunities for them to participate in conversations regarding district programming and contemporary educational issues, by providing those opportunities for the community to share feedback and perspectives on key topics on which the district is working. So early this year, I know it's been a while, but we invited people to be involved with the Husky Home Day. You may remember that, goes back years. We haven't had one of those, but we engaged parents in that conversation to make sure they were informed. We also were in the process of, of bringing on a new student information system that Nancy's really in the charge of. So we engaged parents in that conversation. Really, the new student information system is designed to enhance that communication in a way we can connect the parents and the information parents can get back. Also, one of the more timely conversations we've had, we're looking at a schedule for the middle school, and how we can develop a schedule that meets everyone's needs, meets the needs we've identified. So Matt's started to engage parents in that conversation, and that's an ongoing piece. We're also gonna talk about goal number four, which deals with the restructuring goal, looking, exploring restructuring. And we're in the process of engaging parents in that for our conversation. Let's see. Also, one of those lines is, we talk about destruction, I put a little plug for, if parents are interested in coming in. We're having a superintendent coffee on Wednesday, February 27th at 9:00 a.m. If parents want to come in and engage in that conversation around exploring the restructuring of the middle school model. And then on Thursday night, February 28th, we're also gonna have an evening where inviting parents into have that same conversation.
I'm in the caf.
I'll be in the cafeteria. Then we have our district improvement goals. So our district improvement goals are our three strategic initiatives, providing a rich, rigorous, and relevant curriculum, building a community of respect and inclusion, and safe and healthy learning environment, and ensuring equity and excellence in learning. So we've made progress in a number of different areas. Teachers have been working very hard, and staff, and our administrative team are making those, taking those steps. I know our, so Nick Greenwood and Maya Barry have been working on the digital citizenship curriculum, and working to get that implemented into our middle school. And it's already fairly embedded in our elementary schools, so looking forward to that. We have internet safety presentation coming up after the February vacation for our middle schoolers. We have a variety of inter-school partnerships that have developed. And even most recently, I think Maya, Rachel, and maybe was it Sydney? Looking at a partnership with St. Petersburg, Russia, where they did an Art Link connection. They wrote a grant, and PTO supported that, so that was taking place. We also continue our work with Olveis. Recently, Marcel Pixley, in conjunction with Matt, brought in a group from facing history ourselves, worked with our teachers, are inspiring stability. So working with our teachers to develop some of those strategies that allow you to engage students, and have students engage in some of those conversations that are more difficult and more challenging, and sometimes very, you know, charged, very charged dialogue. But to make sure that in a classroom setting, every child has the opportunity to share their perspective. It's not dominated by one viewpoint or one person. That was a great professional development opportunity. We've also had a group come in to help us with our own mindfulness, and how we can bring mindfulness to our, to our students with regard to just being at peace with themselves and de-stressing. It's part of that decom, not decomposing, but it's kind of about helping students to kind of, as someone referenced earlier, teaching that whole child, but teaching that whole child in a healthy way, as opposed to focusing on academics so strongly that it throws the rest of their life out of balance. So that's, so professional development we're working on. And that's something we can hopefully stay tuned into as we all find ourselves kind of spiraling out of balance in the most recent days and weeks. Also ensuring equity and excellence in learning. Early this year, we had Kristy Hartnell, who was our ELL teacher. She did a workshop on us, and, so a workshop with us, to help us better understand the needs of our students who are ELs, so that we can meet the needs in the classroom. And then most recently, we had Katie Novak, who came and spoke to us about universal design for learning, which is an approach to help us meet the needs of all students, and understanding that we work with a variety of students in the classroom. But instead of making modifications for individual students, it's helping us to understand that as we design instruction, that we should design instruction with the needs of all students embedded in that. There's a lot of big ideas that are taking place, a lot of great conversations going on at school. And the faculty, as Linda referenced earlier, have continued to do a great job of designing, engaging lessons, and taking new information, new strategies, and implementing in the classroom to help our students move forward. So I feel like we are moving forward on that, which is a broad, those are our three broad goals, we're making advances in all of those areas. And then the last one, the last one is, last one is the district planning goal. So this is where we're exploring the possible models for restructuring. Resources at the middle school level, and seek opportunities to refine processes and grades pre-K through eight in order to meet the needs of students, while also addressing declining enrollment and budgetary restraints. So, so this is, this is the area that Linda referenced earlier too, that is causing a good deal of angst among the faculty and staff, because we are looking forward. And if we are in a situation where we do see our enrollments leveling off, plateauing in a space where it's lower than where we are now, then we are looking at the options. What will we be able to do three, four years down the road when our fifth grade bubble appears now, which is at 75, moves on? If we are left with lower numbers? In hearing from the faculty and staff, we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow. But hearing from them, the major concern, as Linda referenced earlier, is that middle school model. The feeling that the middle school team concept creates this fabric for students, so that we can meet both their academic and the social-emotional needs. So there's a concern about the loss of that. But still, we need to look at what the future holds for us, and see if we can identify some practices, some structures, some different models that might be our new reality as we move forward during four years down the road.
I guess I don't follow how a potential restructure in terms of a different, maybe, you know, if you're teaching fewer children, why do you have to destroy the fabric of that team?
Well, that's, that's what we have to explore further, because as we look at different models, there, if we come up with a couple of different models that we've discussed, there's, you go to a three-person team model. Or where you have three people on one team, and you still have that team approach, but you might be teaching outside of your discipline. All three people will be teaching outside of the discipline in some regard. Or you go to a departmental model, and you might have three people in a department teaching social studies, or math, or science. But at that point in time, as, as we schedule students, these are some of the models, like, as we schedule students, you don't have that team approach. You don't have that ability to meet as a team, talk about individual students, talk about their needs, talk about what's going on in their lives at that moment in time, so you can have that network. But we've had conversations, have people have ideas, could we look at a hybrid model? How can we have a hybrid of? So we're still in that exploring, what are the possibilities, what may work, what may not? What are the costs, what are the benefits of moving like that? So we are in that process.
Not easy.
No.
You expect to report back on that next meeting?
So what I think at the next meeting, I think we should have, we should have a kind of standalone agenda item in March, that we really dig into that and present some information to the committee on what we have.
I mean, I recall from you, Josh, the goal that we set out was bringing some alternatives, right?
Yes, and like to see what the options are.
Right, so I think that's what they're doing, and I think we should make sure, Nancy, that we don't overload the March.
Agenda.
Agenda, because we're gonna need a fair amount of time, we're gonna wanna explore that.
Are we on the timeline for that? Is that early to, is that early? Because what I recall that we were gonna do was, once this exploration is done, and some models are, you know, we're gonna come back and discuss, and then we're gonna decide if we're gonna implement something next year. Is March too early to start that discussion?
I don't think so. I think it's a good, I think it's a good time for us to talk about what we have and where we are, and stop that dialogue. Because I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a one-meeting conversation. It's not gonna be, we come to a meeting, we make a decision. Whatever, wherever avenues, whatever possibilities we look at, we're gonna need to explore the ramifications and the benefits further. So I think the benefits start sooner than March, then it starts.
I agree, and I don't, and maybe it was my interpretation of your phrasing, but it's not for us to decide. Maybe ultimately, but we've asked the administration to develop models, that's what you're doing, and I think you're gonna choose.
Right, well, that's what I'd say. I didn't think it would be that far along in the work by March to.
No, but it won't, well, if we're not ready, if you're not ready, then we won't do it in March. But I think the, and somebody, I thought it was you pointed out, you know, the end comes quickly, and there's student awards. There's a whole bunch of stuff that kind of comes at the end. And there's also Jim's formal evaluation for the year. There's things we have to do that take a fair amount of, you know, time, they're important.
Here's what I could ask you. So we have a meeting after school tomorrow, and as we discuss with the faculty, we get an impression of what their thoughts are. Do you think we wanna move this on the agenda for March? Do you wanna do some more work and come back in March, April?
I wouldn't give you a different perspective on this. So I would try to finish this before June, because we've got a lot of other stuff going on in June.
Right.
Given that, and we don't wanna decide something and discuss it at the same meeting.
Right.
If we talk about it rev one in March, rev two in April, we can make.
May.
Make, make decisions in May, and then.
Because the June meeting is.
And then June's evaluation, June is awards, June is different.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a little, I agree with all that. There's a little flexibility in the March, April boundary. But whatever, when, so I agree with Jim, when, when the team is ready, there's faculty input, there's parental input.
Right, until the end of February, where the parent meetings are.
Right, so maybe March is too early, I don't know. But, but we need the appropriate block of time to give it, you know, a full debate. And then whatever our feedback is, you have to take back and run an iteration and come back with your.
And that's why there's part of me that thinks, like, having the conversation here in March gives it more public discussion, right? There's more conversation about.
Well, it can be, you know, several proposals in March, that then get to be fewer proposals in April with more detail.
So I think all that, to me, sounds good, and I'm glad you're scheduled to be meeting with them.
Yes.
I hope those are well attended.
I think we'll have interesting parties, I think. I mean, I've, I've received a couple of emails already from some people that set up some individual times to discuss it, so.
Okay.
Not as positive, if anyone else wants to.
The other thing I just wanna say about this group is I wanna commend you for turning a challenge and potential change into opportunity, in looking to how change can be an opportunity for creating something better. And I commend you in focusing your work that way.
So that's, so those are the four goals we have, that I have, and that's where we are.
Thank you. Edco articles of agreement, or?
All right, so traditionally, I'm not someone that does something right away and gets like, someone says do it, and I do it right away. But the Edco articles of agreement are one of those areas where I did do it right away. And then, when we went back, two months later, like, oh, and we have a couple of smaller adjustments that need to be made to those articles of agreement. They're not in your vote, that your need to have your school committee vote on. So I'm here to have you reconsider. Here are the changes, they're very, they're so small. They're not in the package. They're so small, I'm not sure that they needed to kind of force, but Edco board says to do. So I'm just gonna, I have a copy here. So the first one is the effective date of the articles of agreement. So it's gonna read as of July 1st. In the previous one, it had an older date.
July 1st of the?
July 1st of 2019.
Coming up.
Yes. In the fir, in the first edition that we ratified, it had, in the preamble of authorization, it gave us the date when it was last impacted was May of 2015. Now the change of the date to July 1st, 2017. I just wanted to save the paper, Josh, I apologize.
I appreciate it.
And then in Article Four, under governance, so each, it says, each member district executing this agreement shall annually appoint the superintendent of schools or one school committee member, or charter school board member, as a voting member of the collaborative board. An appointee of the commissioner shall be, and it used to say a voting member to the collaborative, now it says liaison to the collaborative.
Ooh, big change.
An unvoting member now.
No longer voting rights. And then the date of approval, the date approved by the board of directors was January 17th, 2019. That date wasn't there previously. So that is the extent of the changes. But I needed to come back to you to have me vote on that.
Do you need a motion?
We can make the motion now, we can do it later, we can do it at the next meeting, either way.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, all right.
Learned my lesson, don't get out there.
Don't be, don't.
Stay long.
Don't be the first, but don't be the last.
All right. We are gonna take up the vote of the 1920 school calendar at the end. We've already discussed it, but one more round if there are any further comments. The calendar's in the packet.
I had a question based on something I read in the minutes. That said the teachers have not yet voted on the proposed calendar.
Ah, so, as we left the meeting in January, the CTA did meet after that, and they voted, and they approved the calendar as stated. We also posted on the website after that meeting. Did we receive any feedback at all? We haven't received any feedback.
We've conditioned the parent group to accept.
They'll take what they can, right?
To give, to give their feedback in other ways.
Like not showing up?
Social media.
Social media, I'm glad I'm not.
What was that?
Families are still not happy.
Yeah, no. Well, it's still, it's still, it's probably the same issue, right? It's a pre-labor day, post-labor day.
So, so you're saying we've not received formal feedback for that?
Christina's got some feedback from Facebook.
And so, like, the media, they.
It doesn't count.
The parents have an opportunity to discuss this online, and, I mean, it's just, it's hard, because we're trying to meet so many things in creating this calendar, and unfortunately, there are concessions that need to be made, and people don't like the concession that they have to start school before Labor Day.
But they don't feel strongly enough to actually, I mean.
I can't speak for them, I can just say there's.
I interpret what you're saying as you read it on a social media platform.
Yes.
It's not been lodged.
So when last year, the administration did a survey of parents, and two-thirds were opposed to a pre-labor day start.
Yes.
I don't think we have any data to indicate they feel otherwise this year.
They don't feel strongly enough. We don't have a shy population.
Well, I think, I think Josh said last year they said it, but this.
Last year they said it, and it was a survey, this year it wasn't.
We learned to not give a survey.
If you don't wanna listen to the, to the results, don't bother asking the question.
All right, so are there, so who's on the calendar committee?
It's made up of administration and faculty.
Is there parental input in it?
Is there?
So that's identified in the contract, that identifies who the members of the group are.
Okay, so parents are not.
So I, I think we devised the calendar based on educational rights and the best interest of the students.
Right.
And the point being that the hours spent in here are my most valuable to the hours.
Well, I think we're familiar with the.
Although, although everyone is subject to the calendar, so the entire school community is subject to it. So I, I do know what you're saying, but there's.
I mentioned at the, two meetings ago when we brought this up. It syncs up nicely with high school this time around.
And that is one of those, we sync up with snow days and such.
We're covering ground that we could cover, right?
I have been, I've been reminded that, I'm gonna say this. Yesterday was the nine-year anniversary, anniversary of my appointment to the school committee.
Really?
I'm almost ashamed to say it. We've been doing calendars for nine years, and some people, probably even longer than that. It's the same issue around Labor Day.
Nine, how did you get a mid-year appointment?
Because somebody resigned early. So, so it's an important issue, but I think asking for feedback is probably disingenuous.
From parents, you mean?
Yeah, right.
I don't know that we need to ask for it. We asked for it last year, and then.
No, that's what I'm saying. Asking was probably disingenuous, but.
Well, no, I don't, I actually don't agree with that.
It depends on what day, when Labor Day falls.
Not, the process was different last year. You were interested, now I'm saying you, see how I use that term? You were interested, you were interested in getting that information from parents, getting parents' feedback.
Parents are stakeholders in this.
Absolutely.
Parents have the educational interest of their kids at heart as well, and education extends beyond what happens in the classroom.
Okay, but let's not reiterate last year.
So, for you, I sent out the survey to parents. So it wasn't like, I just wanted to make sure, like, it wasn't, it wasn't the administrative or the calendar committee asking for that feedback. It was, it was the committee asking for that.
And, and I don't think, I mean, to the disingenuous comment, for me at least, I didn't think that it would be. And, and I don't think, I mean, to the disingenuous comment, for me at least, I didn't think that it would be two-thirds of the, I figured, gee, if the faculty recommends A, people will side with A. And guess what? They sided with B. I was very surprised.
Well, I think that also it should be said that the administration and any faculty have tried to put together the, the snow day option so that, you know, if that works, we may be able to move in the direction that families would like us to go. But for now, people feel that this is the best academic setting for kids to load the days in front instead of in the end.
And regardless of who asked for the information, I think it was good information, yeah, right? Because you go through
You'd like to know what you're upset?
Well, you know, when you make assumptions about like, how many people like this or how many people like this. Now you actually have some data that says, okay, two out of three people like so we have, we have an idea of how
Is anybody on Facebook supporting you?
Facebook is Facebook, it's like someone comes to your house and asks you to validate unless it comes here. Can I just make a comment in the very bottom? And I'm very sensitive to this from my dealings at the regional school district. They say if your family's observance of a religious holiday will affect your child's ability to meet school expectations. We started using language about cultural observances as well as religious holidays.
So what do we say, just a religious and cultural?
It's awkward, observance of cultural, of a religious holiday or cultural
Does it even need to be said? Does this sentence even need to be?
Yes, let's say it.
I think it's helpful, right? It's helpful because parents like to know that
It's okay.
Because you don't want to feel like you're alone. Like if you think you're alone, then you might not reach out. But if, if the verbiage is there that says, no, we understand.
So what is your proposal, add the word cultural?
Cultural observances.
So not
So it's observance of cultural observances. I actually looked at our policy and that's what we say, but
Is that right?
Yeah.
Can we say that more elegantly?
No.
If your family wishes to
I wish not. Of English teachers.
If your family's observance of a religious holiday or other cultural observance will affect your child's ability.
It's an observance of an observance, that's
Yes, it still is. They didn't solve it initially.
I think the people reading it will appreciate it even if it has two observances. So they'll be like, okay, I can contact because
Thank you.
There's another comment on it, aside from what the days are, I'm really starting to stop. I understand that we set the calendar for the school when the school year starts, stops, when vacations are and so on. I didn't know we were responsible for setting spaghetti supper.
It's not setting, it's just
It's just the calendar.
Knowing that that's when it will be.
I'd like to put the point these on so we don't step on anyone's toes and make sure that everything works. Those are just some of the considerations as we make the calendar, we have to consider.
You consider that, but I'm not sure.
But we don't decide
We're not forcing them.
We don't decide in terms of
Source.com, so let's find
That's within our domain.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's some dates in there, like, parents get supper as well.
But I'm in a business policy.
Acknowledgement adherence, how about adherence, celebration? I'm giving you the source.
Adherence to celebration.
Celebration, adherence.
How about your family's participation in
Participation, yeah.
Religious or You're still an observant, it's not, you don't have to participate to be observing.
All right, you guys.
All right.
Two of one. Enough, enough.
Two of one.
Okay, the next, the next item is the
I think it's
Your recommendation, Jim, about enrollment.
So this is a recommendation for, we have a teacher who would like their child to come to the carlisle school. So Megan Cox, our third grade teacher, is requesting permission for her child to attend. Her child would be entering kindergarten. Currently, we have 47 students registered for K for next year. And this is approximately where we are, where we were last year. This would be, make it 48. And we project that we'd have 55 to 57 students in K for next year. So I think that I, I recommend that we allow for child to come.
Where is the, for K, where is the three versus four section cutoff?
So this year we were up at 50, I think we started at 57. I think last year we were at 63 and we went to the four section. So right in that, right in that realm. Right in that 21
Do you have a number?
Yeah, so we, so we try to, the guidelines are 18 up low.
Okay.
And I think if we have
So 54 were good, 55, nah.
So 19, we're okay, like, we're okay this year, we made it work this year. In that space, you have the 20 and it's a different conversation. So yeah, 20 is probably higher than we'd like it to be.
And you project we'll be at 55, did I hear correct?
So we're at 47.
Yep.
With this child, we're at 48. Last year we were in this space and we had a number of people came in over the course of the summer and we found ourselves at 57.
If you look historically at, you know, mid-February to August 20 something, what is the number of ads for K? You know, last year we got
That's a good question.
But historically, we
We felt like, I don't have that data on my end. I know we felt inundated last year. Like the number we got was above the normal rate. I don't have the data for
You know, the distribution.
Three to five years and what time period they came in.
It's so unpredictable.
Well, it is, but this isn't the first year the school's in business. We can look back on what, what the distribution of ads from February on are.
There've been years where we've gotten surprised with like four in July, you know, that's
I could find that information. When do you need to make a decision on this?
As always, the sooner the better, right? Because she needs to make plans for her family and for the children.
We, I think in the past, we put it off a little bit, more towards April, but I, you know, that's still a long way, you know, potential for a lot of opens, but
Struggling with the rationale for putting it on. A hypothetical influx of a population that we don't even know is going to happen.
Well, if, if we knew that we were going to get six ads from now, we'd say, no problem. If we knew we were going to get 15 ads, we'd say, no problem.
We would?
I don't know, I mean
Because, right, not a second
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you make a decision based on one incremental student? I personally can't see saying anything but yes to the request, unless, I mean
The question is on class size, right?
So, David, I've heard, and you probably have heard, many concerned residents about this policy. And the general answer to them is, if we haven't had to increase class size for it because we stayed within the guidelines.
I have not, yeah, okay. I mean, I acknowledge your point of view, but my point of view is, I've never heard that and I've never felt like
You've never gotten any citizen pushback?
I have not, and I think actually the opposite. They like the fact that the faculty send their children here and I think it's a good thing. And so I don't view, we've been clear that if a student of a faculty would require services we can't provide, that we wouldn't do it. But for the, for the normal course of events, I personally can't see us making a no decision on an increment of one or two or whatever. I mean, if six teachers came together, for some reason they all had kids that
In the same group.
Then, I mean, we might stop and think for a minute, but it's not, it's not been that way. And I don't personally see it ever, that the normal situation of one teacher says, I have a child and he or she would like to go to kindergarten, that we would say no. So I'm happy to push it off a month and for whatever reason, but I don't see how the knowledge either, the we're not going to know that much more next month than we know today. And I, even if we knew it, I'm not sure how
It is one child.
Yeah, it's one child. So that's what I feel, that's all. Expressing my opinion. So I, I'm ambivalent as to whether we vote today or does it greatly inconvenience Ms. Cox that we wait a month?
I'm not sure, but I would believe we always wait a month, like, we always
All right, so we wait a month. I've said my All right, what do we got? Budget, Ms. Craig, would you like to come through?
So currently we have free cash, unencumbered money of $11,500. We are waiting, in the month of March, we'll do the circuit breaker transfer
Yep.
which will put money back into the tuition line. We will be continuing probably to go over a little in custodial. Not only did we do the transition of the two facility managers, but currently we have two full-time custodians out on extended leave. Nothing serious, serious, but it involves substitute custodial coverage. So we build in a small line for custodial subs, but this is going to probably incur some more cost. We've just signed on another young man to subs, so we have two, which is huge for us to have two custodial subs. And
So will that situation be the rest of the school?
No, no, these two gentlemen are out for three to six weeks. But we like to have the subs on our, you know, just in case.
So what you're saying is we're, we're still mildly positive?
Yes.
Even with all that?
Yes.
And that accounts for circuit breaker as well, or that's
Circuit breaker's not in there yet, it will be in March and then will be
More, more positive?
Yep.
So you're okay. Okay, any questions on the budget?
No, thank you, Susan.
All right, so let's move right into your, your projection. You had been asked, Susan, by Josh Certainly and I think also Finance Committee to
Correct.
Come up with a longer range view of things and want to walk us through that.
Josh, please. Yeah, so we start off with our enrollment projection. So we have to look at a lot of different enrollment, I just said, I didn't break it down to the month span so we know exactly when the influx take place. But, so if you look at this chart, and you probably won't be able to read the numbers, which I apologize for. We have two bars. One is a red bar, which is our Nezdec, New England School of Development company that they give us, every four years, they give us enrollment projections. So these are their projections. The green bar, that is, that is the district's projections. They our own formula for projecting. The line right here, the line that we're looking at is 600 students. So right now we are at 610 students. So if you look at, for next year, the Nezdec is projecting we'll have 596 students and the district is projecting we'll have 609 students. And then in 2020, 2021, Nezdec's projecting that we're going to be at 602. I'm projecting with, well, we're projecting we're going to be at 601. 2021, Nezdec, so Nezdec incorporates into their projection, they look at the births and they look at the movements, they look at this data. They're projecting that we'll have 619 students pre-K through 8. My projections come out at 605. Again, we just, we created, I created my formula based on the past five or six-year trends as opposed to the past 10-year trends. And they use more current birth rates and such.
I'm sorry, can you explain a little bit more of my follow-up? What comes with the difference of 20-ish students, give or take? So every year for the next five, seven years between the two models?
So the MOTS, I'm not sure how they calculate, they do it center, they look back and look at the data they have. I took a probably a seven or eight-year span, the past seven or eight years, and looked at the average growth from K through 8. Took an average growth, took the two outliers out, took the two outliers out, took the average growth there and came up with a formula that I then projected on top of our kindergarten enrollments and our projected kindergarten.
Does that include any demographic data or projections regarding housing starts or age of residents?
So that would be the Nezdec. The Nezdec is more accurate, mine is a much more basic approach.
But you can't say accurate, it has not, yeah, you have to
Basically, there's many more data, mine is a very simple
Their methodology appears more
Simple now.
I'm just asking, what accounts for the 20-ish difference between the two models?
I think they're saying like, gee
In the back of the envelope works better than
In 2000, where are we, 2019? In 2014, there were 12 children born in the town. So next year, they should all be in kindergarten, right?
Yeah, they use that data. But like, I even look at like, so next year's projection, they're projecting we'll have 40 children. We just established that we have at least 48 children, if I got it right.
I think
For a couple more. So I, I think it's just helpful to have the two pieces of
Have you had a dialogue with the modeling people at Nezdec at all, or something?
I haven't had a dialogue with them, but they sent in a cover sheet that explains the part of their modeling process, but it's not that clear in the modeling. They explain a lot more how you should use the data and look for trends.
So, I mean, at a macro level, I think, to my view, whether you choose the green bar or the red bar, it's kind of a flat slope, right?
Yeah.
And, and maybe it's, you know
It's not 800.
It's not 800. If the difference is 15, let's say, out of 600, or 16 out of 600, what's the easy number? 18 out of 600 is 3%, something like that. So it's not given, we're all crystal balling. They're not really that far apart. I mean, we see these bars and that's 40 kids, but the fact is, it's pretty close to each other and it's a flat slope. That's what I think.
That's what I, that's, what I take away from this is, yeah, it's fairly, like, it is flat and it's just
Just kind of staying
But it's like right above 600, it's just
And we've been, and in fact, if one looks back, we didn't put it here, but if you look back, I don't know, four years or so, it's been pretty much bumping along at that 600, like 610, 620, something. So it, it's unsurprising to me, and I guess to move to the next slide, I mean, the question is, all right, flat population, what's the impact on the budget?
So then, this is Sue's chart of the budget moving forward. I think we can all share credit to the CAGR.
CAGR, that's, Melinda actually pointed it on the narrative, thank you, I forgot to thank you.
So the CAGR is the compound annual growth. So what we did, we looked at the, here's, this is the budget. So the budget is projected to continue growing as it has grown. But for the, the slope, it is, too, is flattening out of that. So if we look here, from FY11, FY19, the compound annual growth is about 2.77. And then we're looking from FY20 to FY27, the compound annual growth we calculated is about 2.18. And what's to account for that is really, it's many of the same conversations lately when we look at our budget. When we look at our budget, we have an outstanding faculty and they have great experience and we have people who've been here for a while and we see projected out that we will have people retiring. And the idea is that as people retire over to the future, we bring people in at low salaries and we derive some savings.
Jim, these aren't the same exact numbers that were in the packet. Can you explain the almost two-thirds of a percent difference between the
Maybe a math error.
I, I just updated the spreadsheet. There was a math error.
There was a math error that Melinda
I just updated the spreadsheet.
So you can blame me for the math error, because I was part of that.
You're a math guy.
But we all now understand how to calculate
I screwed it up.
I just wanted to say what it does for the difference.
That's more accurate.
You put it to the power of one over the number of terms. So they subtract one, you all got that, you got that now. But, but, you know, seriously, so I think part of the projection helps us understand like we are hoping that the budget increases as we move forward and the percentages won't be as large as we had the past. Last year, this year, yeah, we're, we're coming over three, but we're looking out and we're looking to be in the two range. We even have one year, based on the projection, that we can be in below two. But these are
These are all crowned up models?
Yes, he means build it up from the line by line.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
No, Susan did a lot of it.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, and I'm at the risk of dipping a toe in, you know, controversial water. I understand that, you know, some part of this audience may look and say, well, gee, that's pretty low. There's a group that's not here
Yeah.
That says, we can't keep going at 2.773. And that's an argument that's beyond this committee.
No, but I think, there is some number where, you know, I don't think it's a 2.7, but it might be of the two range.
Right, I mean, right. There are people who are responsible for finances in the town who say that 2.77 is not a sustainable slope.
We both understand that as well.
Want to say that, I know, may not Want to say that, and I know may not be...
But part of selling, part of selling, this will be helpful in selling the budget.
We were asked, this was very important to do. And we've socialized it now with FinCom, right? I think they have.
We haven't yet.
No, this is...
This is just to you first. One of the big drivers in ongoing budget is transportation. And we just opened our transportation bid Tuesday. So we're going to be doing some talking and negotiating and hopefully come in at a reasonable compromise. So I'm not changing that number yet in the five years out, but hopefully in the next month, I'll be able to...
Well, I think, and to go back to the context, FinCom said, well, they cut us back, but they said, you know what? We really got to have some comfort of where you're going with this.
Well, that's what I've been saying too.
And so you need to give us this information. And I think this will, this will help, I think, give them some confidence and control.
Now, historically, we've come back a number of times and said, yeah, we thought it was going to be X, but we had the surprise out of district. What did you do to plan for surprises when you were doing your budget? What were your assumptions?
So in the next two or three years out, we know our current out of districts and we put two placeholders in.
Well, you don't know, you want to clarify. You don't know them.
Well, we know the ones we currently have.
Well, we know them personally too. We do know them, so we know who they are.
No, you don't, no, no, Jim, no.
I don't want to move to town next year.
But it's, you don't know the places. That's right.
No, you don't. So going out, we keep track of the ages, who's aging out. Hopefully, we're not going to incur new ones coming in, but we keep more placeholders in place because history shows us we generally have between seven and nine. And there may be a year it looks like, wow, we're going to get down to four. That's nuts, you can't.
From a modeling, I mean, and, and I think Cynthia kind of pointed this out to me a few months ago. It's been, I look back, it's been a fairly stable out of district population as a pure number, right?
The number's been more stable, the costs have gone up.
That's something that's hard to control.
Right.
So with respect to, go.
Hold on, you just talked about transportation being a significant portion of this, but we have one bid.
That's correct.
How are you expecting that to stay flat or go down?
It will never go down.
Yeah.
It's, it's a universal issue. Every district you talk to gets their one vendor to bid and they won't bid against...
So there's collusion. There's no collusion.
Don't say that. But I guess I'm asking how you built that into the budget? I'm assuming you, you assumed some increase.
I did, I assumed an increase. And the issue that we go back and negotiate with, and I'm getting the current bids from surrounding communities as a base to go talk to this company, is that we're compared by our vendor to communities like Waltham and Lexington and Newton. And, you know, I explained to him, we are a K through, K through eight bus, you know, school system. There is no way you can compare us to a district with one or two high schools, two or three middle schools, and four or five elementary schools. So he has some re-educating to do and we have a conversation to cut out.
A different question for you. So this projects the next few years, 2.18% CAGR. Now, as David alluded to, regardless of what happens year to year, we have long-term issues of what is affordable for the town.
Correct.
And that's going to be, there are going to be ongoing discussions with FinCom, selectmen with community about that. If, as I expect it will, it ends up slightly less than that in affordability, how do you get there? Less than 2.18?
Hmm, what?
Two.
What, I'm sorry, what?
So let's say we look at, whether it be housing growth in the town, which is remiss to zero. We look at tax rate...
Four percent.
Yeah, 2.18. Have you looked at what steps you would take in budget planning? Not necessarily one year out, but over the five to 10-year period to come up with a lower CAGR, a lower overall.
You know, Josh, what we did currently is, like Jim said, we just did some projections. I know the years and ages of our staff, and I try to go out, you know, who might be on that cusp of retirement, who might be doing lane changes. I don't want to just estimate low salaries, but highs.
This isn't a model question about how to model the future budget.
Right.
It's a question for you two as the business leaders of the district. If over the next decade, you've got to get to a number below 2.18%.
Our business is education, so it's educational.
I want to jump in. I think that's not what, certainly I asked them to do. I think from our view, at least as a first step, you say, okay, what is the populate, what do we think about school population?
I understand.
Okay, so we get that.
I fully support the work that's done. I'm asking for what I expect the next step over the coming year is going to be, which is that...
It's a fair question, but I want to make sure that we frame it properly. Your request and FinCom's request might not have been the same request, but FinCom said, you know, give us a look. We see there, without seeing the bars, they already knew from their own work, I'm sure they do similar modeling, that, you know, population is flat. Because guess what? You know, the town population is flat. And by the way, kids are graduating out of the system all the time. There's not as many, so they already knew that part of it. They said, what are you doing? You know, what's that slope look like, given flat? So we've, and there's a fair amount of modeling just to do that. So that's what primarily Susan, somehow from us, has been doing. Now, the next layer that you ask, you know, can be taken on, but that isn't the question that FinCom asked us.
That's going to be the next question.
It might be. I get, I get it. It might be.
And I'd rather be prepared for that question.
Well, part of it is, you know, we're having a restructuring discussion.
We've already had the conversation with FinCom. Like, right now, when, you know, we're looking at different models just to save the 75K that they've asked us to, right? So these become education questions. These become, what are we going to give up as we move forward? So if you have a place where it's like, we need to bring that down further, then those are educational conversations that we need to have as a community.
So I'm not asking about what do we do for next year or what do we do for 2021 to get below the 75K. What do we do as a district to change the slope of that curve? And we should have an understanding of what that means.
But we're entering, I mean, that goes back to the earlier conversations. We, as a committee, have challenged them to look at the middle school structure. And now they're going through that process. And some people are upset about it and some people aren't, and I don't know. But it's a process to address exactly what you're saying. What are their options if, if the scope is narrowed? If the, if the town wants to narrow, quite bluntly, the percent of their budget that they allocate for K-8 education, you got to go through these...
Well, it's not even narrow, you can stay the same. The overall town budget has its limits.
No, I mean, yeah, okay, fair. But all I mean is...
Well, those are big questions. Those are questions about what it looks like out there, what it feels like out there, as far as educational experiences for students. So we, if we're going to, those are bigger conversations. Those are just not Sue and I sitting in a room. That's everybody sitting in a room and then the community understanding what that means and deciding this is where we stand and this is where we stand and this one.
So I guess there are two different aspects of, we talk about middle school restructuring. Potentially, there are savings associated with that and educational opportunities associated with that. Potentially, there are both. But those savings would be reflected in a, one year, we'd see, instead of a 2.2 average, we'd see, hopefully, less than that if there were savings. But we'd still get back on the 2.2 curve after that year. Other more, other structural changes...
That is a structural change, right?
Other types of structural changes potentially change the shape of the curve, not just give us a one-year look at it. Those are...
Isn't that what that would...
I think that would, that would...
Okay, explain to me how that works then. So let's say we end up, the year we instituted restructuring, getting a savings. That saving isn't felt again.
No, I don't agree.
That savings is everything.
I'm not sure I see it that way.
Yeah.
You know, part of this restructuring discussion is about, what can we do to be more flexible in the structure? And it's not necessarily something that I think is going to be, you know, a want and done sort of implementation. I think it's looking, how do we optimize the resources that we have at school now and be flexible so that we can...
And I want to say, I mean, I don't want to be myopic on the percent, okay? I really think that that's not the right framework. It's the FinCom framework. I get it, because that's the way they have to piece it together. But let's just say, to Melinda's point, that we develop some flexibility. And then there isn't, and with middle school, you get some advanced notes usually because the kids are coming through the system. But, you know, let's look at the other way, right? We're looking at the dip of the current fourth grade, right? Is it fourth grade?
Yeah, the fifth.
But, you know, in a few years, it could be like, there's 20 more kids, more kids, more kids, right? And we have to, okay, how do we, how do we react to that? And that might be a one-year bubble that finds its way through. So I think, first of all, my point of view is they're starting a process to address exactly what you're asking. And we need to let that work its way out. And that the flexibility is more, from my perspective, because we're so small of a town, a few kids make a big difference. And so we need to be a little more flexible in how we organize that so that we neither over nor under-resource in any given situation. I don't really like, I really don't like that, well, we're going to do 2.2 or whatever. We kind of, kind of say that to, as I said, to give FinCom some confidence that we're controlled, because that's what they're like, controlled. But really, each year is its own year and we just have to show that we're flexible and efficient. And there are going to be years where we, and I've been through them as a FinCom guy, where you go for an override. You have to ask and you need more money. And I think that's fair. But you got to do it with, you'll only, in my opinion, you'll only succeed at that override request if those, that side is confident that you're not BSing. You've really done all your homework and you really do need it. And that's why we do it.
Well, I, I think you have a plan for, whether it be 2.18 or some other number. The important part is the plan. Then if we need something different from that, we can explain what varied from our assumptions going into the plan. We didn't, we thought there were going to be 600 kids, we got 650. This is a good thing.
Right, it's a good thing. So we're, I think we're in agreement. I applaud Sue for a lot of work and it's a work in progress and... All right. Very good, thank you. Okeydoke. Do we have the appetite? How much time do you guys have on the budget? I'm, I'm going to ask this in a small group here. You're not going to be long in your super tension, but it's all right. So really, we have probably 25-ish minutes. You guys ready to tackle some policies? Okay. Yep.
I thought for putting the policies off because I have a fair amount to, kind of high-level to talk to, like a process.
Okay, so you don't want...
Can we?
You don't want...
I don't know, but do we just keep in the can down the road?
Well, we always are. But I mean, it's okay, I think, if you have, if you're not prepared, then...
No, I'm prepared, but I think there's just, there's too much to talk about.
You want to pick one or two?
So let's not spend a lot of time talking about what... No, no, I, I think I'd, I'd like to talk to Jim about the process for this.
The process of policy.
Like, yeah, and, and some specific ideas for a couple of months we're talking about tonight that may make our job more efficient.
And you want to do that in this meeting or...
No, no, no.
All right.
That's all right. Anybody really want to talk about these?
So you don't, Mary, you're saying you want to talk about the process as opposed to the policies?
I would look both with Jim. That would make our next conversation...
Outside this meeting.
Is that fair?
Sure.
All right. Fair enough.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, then let's move to communications and correspondence.
There's a heading, communications.
There's a legislative board.
Oh, they're making that way around.
I just got that too.
Same one in there twice.
Yeah, it's okay. There's some chapters.
I handed it to you, I did hand it to you.
I just got a new one, actually. That's, the new one just came out. House proposes 40... No, it's the same one. No, it's the same one. Okay.
There's an email in there too.
All right, I'll look at that. Jim, you want to start in on your report?
Sure, just a couple of things, more than a couple of things that are taking place at school. In January, we had a Science Bob came out. I'm familiar with Science Bob, but did presentations to both the middle school, the elementary school. Thank you to the Curriculum and enrichment committee of PTO for making that possible. Many of you had children make their way through kindergarten in the district at one time or another. And of course, last week, we had the Mitten play. I don't know if you've had that opportunity lately. Always grand. And then, I don't know if you had the opportunity to attend the Chinese New Year Festival. Chow Bin and her volunteers and our students put on an incredible program. She got the Carlisle Chinese community to get all this food together for the event on Saturday. It was incredible, well-attended, just a, just an incredible event. Great cultural experience and thank you to Chow Bin for making that possible for us. Also, last week, we had the family folk dance. Valerie Tomford, our chorus director, has a folk dance club and then they put on an evening for families to, well, take advantage of that. Also, I want to give Valerie a shout out. Earlier this year, she wrote a grant for ukuleles from the PTO. So now in her music class, she, the students are also learning to play the ukulele. Again, that's just another one of those rich, rigorous, relevant curriculums that our teachers have worked on. And that, I have, have to go in my ukulele.
So instead of recorders, it's ukuleles? That's pretty cool.
It's probably both. It's probably recorders at one stage of the game and ukuleles at another stage of the game and it's great. Today, we had the third grade held the Native American showcase. That was always a big hit, well-attended. And this year also, each of the classrooms in the front of the room had a, had a slide presentation. So each child made a, like a digital visual that they could roll through at the beginning of the classroom. It's both, they got the Native American traditional program, but they also did a little more with the technology and the digital. Fifth grade took a trip to the Conca Museum. Half the class went today, half the class was supposed to go yesterday, but since we had the early dismissal, they didn't have the chance to go, so they're going next week. Michelle's menagerie was at preschool today. Again, Shakespeare Company, so our eighth grade traditionally, Marcel Pixley works with them on a Shakespearean comedy. And they've been working for the last couple of weeks on this. And then Shakespeare Company come out to work with them on Friday and then they do the production in the middle school. So that's a great experience for our students. Um, we have vacation coming up. And then we have, as we said, Superintendent's Coffee next, a week after vacation, to discuss the restructuring, and that's February 27th at 9:00 a.m., and then February 28th at 7:00 p.m. Um, also, in March, we have, the administrative team will be hosting the Council on Aging Breakfast. And right now, we also, we received the RFP for the HVAC study. Norian and Siani have got that, and they're going to be starting that process. So we're looking forward to that.
Do you expect to have results back in time for town meeting, right?
No, we're not going to put it for this down. They'll give us some idea of what's going on.
Um, there's probably a thousand other places, there are a thousand other places they could place the school, but that's an update for now.
Thank you. All right, I guess we'll...
David, may I ask you a question about the correspondence that came out?
Yeah.
So, um, and here is a note on the state budget, revamping Chapter 70. Do we have an understanding of how that'll affect our district?
You know...
$30,000.
Which way?
Edit.
You already know that?
Well, this is the proposed, but like, so it's proposed. That, that finally goes to the town hall, doesn't come through the schools, but it's, it would be an add.
No, but where did you, who gave you that $30,000?
It's, you can get it printed out of every town, and it's impacted on every town.
Green plum sheets, whatever they call it?
No, it's, it's a proposal.
Cherry sheet?
So it's a proposal, right? This is, if it goes through, that'll be the impact, if it doesn't go through, there's no, yeah, it gets rid of it.
I mean, in the old Larry Barton days, you could get a pretty good crystal ball about, you know, how much of that will really come our way? But now, I don't know, we don't have, we have nobody yet.
Just, on the face of it, 1/30, because that's a fraction of the budget, right?
1/30, oh, what?
A third of the...
No, it's the delta that matters.
That's what I mean, third of the delta.
Okay.
Oh, a third of the delta.
Just ballpark.
But we'll see how it, how it moves, because there's still a number of different committees looking at that. So if that's, it could actually...
Okay. All right.
Can I see, David, the folders?
Oh, the folder, sure, yeah. All right, uh, let's talk about payroll warrants.
Want to talk about member committee reports?
Oh, member committee reports, I'm sorry.
I'm dying to talk about the region.
Tell me about the region, yeah, I never...
So, a bunch of, cut it, I'll try to make them quick. So we've been talking about virtual snow days there, where you, we signed up on a plan last week for the K8 and 9/12, similar things will start on a day three, I think, of the third snow day, if we get there, hopefully not. Um, the Concord FinCom asked Regional School Committee to look at all of the cost. They actually gave us a list of all of the services, I'll say, and costs that, or services that the Town of Concord provides to the school, or sharing, you know, blah, 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 blah. Because they want to make sure the regional school district, Carlisle, is paying a fair share of services that the Town of Concord provides to the regional school district.
It's like busing, you mean?
No, like the police and fire.
Plowing, police, it's, it's, we just...
Seriously?
Put it all together and responded to it. Well, it's, you know, they ask, and it's been answered. So we'll see where that goes and how it impacts.
So do you think that that ends up being, like, that they would disproportionately raise it to Carlisle? Because Concord's already paying through its taxes, or what?
No, I think, I think this is their only way to get Carlisle to pay what they perceive as our fair share.
They want to send the district a bill for police services, basically.
What's that?
So the Town of Concord wants to send the district, the regional district, a bill for police services?
In effect.
Kind of, yeah. And some law has been...
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a school resource office.
When it's, when it's your own town, it's a zero-sum game, right? Silly game. But when it's a region...
I think a lot of it, it came from the politics of it, right? And the building of Bus Depot, which we told them six or seven years ago, we didn't want any part of, so...
So they want to make us a part of it anyways?
So I actually dug out the letter from 2012 and sent it as a reminder, so. So that's going on. Lots of talk about the warrant article for the parking, additional parking and paving and lighting. We were supposed to meet with the forest department, is that last night?
Monday.
Yeah, last, last night, and that got canceled because of the snow. So, um, one thing I did want to say, so Dorothy Presser is our new NASC rep here. She's also the one in, in Concord, and she's great. I've worked with her a lot on the policy committee, so she's really good. Christine, you want to say anything about the TV studio? We're still working through that agreement, is there any, probably not really relevant here?
No, just talking to you.
Okay, that's all I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Christine, anything to add?
But, but we, we should start thinking, as we get later in the year, who the regional reps will be next year, and all of our subcommittees, and all that stuff. I said nine years. Did you?
No, no, but, but there will be opportunities for the public, unfortunately, they're only Concord, to hear about the warrant article for the paving and parking over at the high school.
They're not going to come to Carlisle. So, so I, I actually say, I try to tell them that because it's a high school, regional school district article, that people, parents of high school students are used to going to the high school. And that's, that's where it should be. But there's 47,000 of them, right?
Yeah.
40,000 what?
Meetings.
Meetings.
Well, they're also proposing it to middle school, and they're not going to get any MBSA funding, so they've got a big sell to do.
Because the MSBA thinks they already have enough schools?
They, I don't know why. That's their Concord meeting of regional...
Good. That's it from the region.
Melinda?
I feel like all the committees are running together. Okay, so there is, there is one thing that is good news for the town, which we're waiting before we make a press announcement, and we can't make a press announcement quite yet, but...
But you're going to do, you're about to do it?
I am, because I've been, you know, we've been holding, holding this back for a while. The, the town did receive a grant award for complete streets, so we'll be doing some...
Oh, congratulations, Melinda.
I did read the paper today. Yes, well, I told the, I told Betsy that we were, we're having, the state is having their precedent next, uh, the February 26th, so they had asked us to, you know, kind of, but anyway, there might be some more news about that after the precedent. Um, so Carlisle did receive a grant award to work in the rotary, build the sidewalk segment from each street to fern, and...
That's awesome. I know some good stuff in there.
Yeah, oh, I got to read it. So, is that, is that enough?
Good. Josh?
An easy one is long-term capital requirements. We met with school committee, and had some discussion about police creatures. We have one final meeting set up for the, this will be two weeks from now, where we're hoping to finalize our recommendations. Still, issues outstanding regard, new washer dryers for the fire station. Most of the other issues have been resolved.
Okay.
With respect to Municipal Facilities Committee, we have hired the town's municipal facility manager, a 19-hour-a-week position. He started this week. Uh, we had negotiated a fee with the architects for the police station refurbishment, in the hope that the detailed cost estimates would be done in time for town meeting. That is still our hope, although it's looking less and less likely as every day goes on. Took some time to actually conclude the contract, and then there was back and forth on site documents. There was other things on the Facilities Committee. The contamination from the underwater, underground storage tanks of the fire station was not as bad as feared. That's the bad news, the good news, the bad news is, yeah, we got another tank we got to pull out, so we don't know what we're going to find from that one. So, that's the, the big, big environmental issues.
Okay, any other reports? All right. Okeydoke. Uh, we are on to warrants.
In addition to the ones that are listed on the agenda, there is one more. And it is an accounts payable warrant, number 5619, for $95,466.31.
Let's move to action areas. First one is to vote the land use for the solar project. And you had an, you had a draft of a resolution?
Can you give us a, are you sure we see the packet? Is the language to vote, or no? Or can you start doing that, so we have official language?
Usually when we're voting, there's, there's proposed language, so we know it. Do you have something?
Yeah, I move that the school committee approve the proposed installation of solar canopies in the school parking lot and bus area contingent upon establishment of the solar overlay district and associated bylaw, reaching an acceptable lease agreement with paving plan, and meeting the conditions of site plan review.
Second.
Discussion?
Do conditions of site plan review permit school committee objection?
Uh... I think we're obligated to provide input, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're asking that, we're asking that...
Absolutely.
What was that?
He wants a veto down.
Not individually, but for this committee.
No, by the committee.
So, what this is saying is they need to meet the conditions of site plan review, set forth by the planning board?
No, but Josh is saying something different. Say the planning board likes it, and we don't like something, so what? Get overruled, right? He wants a veto. So we, we approve it on the condition that we have a blocking right.
I don't think we can do that.
We can say we support it based on the plan we have, but we can't support it until, every, we can't finalize or support it.
Finalize, there's some variables there that we are concerned.
I think, I think it's got to, that kind of thing would have to go to town council.
Yeah, because we can't, I mean, there's site plan review is a legal process, and, and the planning board will ask for our input. And if they don't agree with us...
They don't have to follow our input.
Right.
No, they don't.
But, I would like to think they did. To the extent it's reasonable, they would take our input.
I would not surrender our, our authority so severely.
Then we add school committee approval.
Can you read the resolution again?
Yes, so I move that the school committee approve the proposed installation of solar canopies in the school parking lot and bus area contingent upon establishment of a solar overlay district and associated bylaw, reaching an acceptable lease agreement with paving plan, and meeting the conditions of site plan review and school committee approval.
That's, you don't have to say, site plan review... In which...
See, we can't require the planning board to listen to us.
I, I'm not qualified to comment.
Do we need to vote on this tonight, because of your...
Can we give an indication of support, or is it final?
Right, right, the whole point here was to be able to move the things forward, yeah. So we could figure out the way, the best way to...
Well, we, we can draft what we want, but if it's conflicts with town bylaw, I mean, I don't know, to Mary's point, whether we can impose that condition. Once we set the ball rolling on the planning process...
We said we like this, we think we like this design, but we're not sure.
So we could say contingent upon school committee approval of engineering designs?
Of final design.
Of final, so, like, plan to be...
It has to go before site plan.
Yeah, it does, it does. So it would be another step in the process where we could say...
Then we have to have that stuff?
So, yeah, yeah. So, established solar overlay district.
What was that second component about the paving, acceptable to whom?
Acceptable lease agreement means we, we assign a lease.
This committee?
And we have a paving plan.
This committee signs the lease?
No, no, but there is a, the town signed the lease.
So who negotiates the lease?
So, the national, this is obviously...
Well, unless it's us, in which case that's a block.
No, the lease is established by the block, by the, the lease payment is established by the block that it gets accepted.
So what we're saying, who signs the lease agreement? So this is on school committee property?
But the town signed it, right?
I think the school committee, it is not the school committee signing this agreement.
I don't think we're...
The town was entering into it.
Yeah, I think the town's entering into a lease.
It's either, either that, or the, well, there's two separate properties, so it's looking at school and the transfer station. There will be, there will be two leases.
Because one is ours, you think?
I don't know, we're getting out of our depth. I think, can we do a resolution tonight that says we endorse the plan to continue? And then we go get all these questions answered, because these are town council questions.
Well, some are, some aren't. Where are the posts going to be?
No, no, the post, that's a mechanic, you're right. But the, the, the legal question of who signs the lease, and whether we have a blocking right, you know, to the final design, and blah, blah, blah. Regardless of whether it's a post, or it's, we don't like the V, or who knows what we don't like. So I think, we don't, we'd like to give them kind of a feeling that we, so far, we...
We support what we see so far.
That's right, so can we say something about that? Or is it even worth saying?
It's just kind of what we've already done, right?
Yeah, you know, this is, so these are the steps that need to happen in order for this to move forward. So making a contingent upon these things, I think adding, you know, the statement that school committee, you know, approve the engineering designs is sufficient.
Okay. Okay. If you can word that.
But back to the paving piece. When you read number two, so this...
Acceptable lease agreement with paving plan.
Like, who's, like, they may come back with a paving plan, I may have, they may come back with a paving plan, we're going to pave over where we trenched, and that's it, and not the paving plan.
That's acceptable.
This has to be acceptable to us, yeah.
By whom? But is that, now the school committee, is acceptable to school?
Yes, the school committee is...
I think, I think one of the things, Jim, is if, well, at the end of the day, and that we have, Melinda and I had this conversation this morning. If there, it's all financial model, so if they bake in the paving, they're going to lower the lease payments. It's going to be the same cash flow that the town. My personal, not personal, but my school committee interest is that we don't make it like our ask to be doing the paving. Whether the, whether it's baked into some lease stream payment, or the town says, you know what? As long as we're chopping up the parking lot, come on, Gary, bring your trucks, we're going to pave. I don't really care.
I don't care, I just want to pave.
We want to pave, that's it.
That's it.
So we don't want to get hung up in this block three, block four, because they can't figure it out. You know, at the end of the day, it's sort of, to me, a town situation, as long as we say, hey, that's got to be accepted, we pave.
I just want to make sure that that's acceptable to us, and not to someone else.
Well, what Melinda said, that's my view. You're a municipal guy, what do you think?
I think it's easier if we don't have to try to sell it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I, I agree with you in that respect. I still do want to make sure we have final gate on this.
Oh, yeah, final gate is on all aspects. So have you figured out the wordsmithing to put an engineering plan on there or something?
Contingent upon establishment of a solar overlay district and associated bylaw, reaching an acceptable lease agreement with paving plan, school committee approval of engineering designs, and meeting the conditions of site plan review. Perfect.
Our word.
Second. But that doesn't really mean second.
Further discussion, amended?
Did you get that answer? Because she's amended it, and Josh said, Josh said we did the amendment.
No, I did not get it.
We will provide it to you. So we're voting on the amended language, right? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Edco Articles of Agreement, deeply come.
I'll make a motion to accept the Edco article, the, the, are we accepting the changes or the articles themselves?
Are we resigning it?
We got to resign it, yes. David's going to resign.
I'll make a motion to accept the Edco Articles of Agreement, second.
As amended, or as amended?
As amended, yeah.
Discussion?
Uh, it's a question, you mentioned that we, we have a voting member, now we don't have a voting member?
No, no, the commissioner, the only change was the commissioner appointed someone to be on the board as a voting member, but then it wasn't, it was determined not to be appropriate. So the commissioner has a liaison to vote on.
An admission liaison?
We still have, we still have a voting member.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Vote in 1920...
I'll make a motion to accept the 2019, 2020 calendar as proposed, with a small wording change about religious holidays and cultural observances.
Discussion? Said it before, but I prefer that if we, this committee acts unanimously, but in this case, I can't. I think we need to listen to our customers.
Can we give feedback to the calendar committee about, you know, the possibility that we implement the Husky Home Learning, and it works, that that might be able to, that might allow us to...
Problem is, we didn't get a beta site...
I don't mean this year, I mean for next year, I don't mean this year.
No, but we don't have, I mean, if we were sitting here and we had, it might, if we'd successfully done Husky Home Day, and everything was great, then we could go back to, yeah, see?
Right, so between now and then, you know, we probably will.
So the committee briefly discussed that, and we can revisit it at the next, next December.
Just put it on the radar, and that's a possible, you know, that's a possibility for future...
So the one thing we do, is make sure this gets out widely communicated, that we finalize this.
There were comments that it was not there.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, we can try to go or communicate about it.
I would like to offer the wordsmithing of the last sentence, which is following. If your family's observation of religious holiday or other cultural observance will affect...
Yeah, there you go. So now it's an observation of one observance, I think that's better. Let's move on, people, let's go, okay.
That'll be a little more devil's more.
No, we're ready to vote. All in favor of accepting the school calendar with various annotations? Say aye? Aye. All those against, say nay? Anybody abstaining? No? Vote carries four to one. Okay. And... You don't, you want to, I mean, we've already sort of...
No, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the other policies, yeah.
So these are policies we discussed last time. The buildings and grounds, these adds were whose?
So what, I'll make a motion to accept the Buildings and Grounds Safety and Security Policy, the Emergency Closings Policy, and Facility Naming Policy.
I'd rather you take them.
Okay. I'll make a motion to vote to accept the Buildings and Grounds Safety and Security Policy.
Second?
My second.
So, my, my Josh-style comment is the following, is they say, "An adequate key control system and valuable records will be kept in a safe place under a locking key." But...
Is the cloud a lock on the key?
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't we just say, "An adequate control system will be established, and valuable records will be kept in a safe and secure place?"
Yeah.
Or kept securely.
Right.
Not even the place that matters, it's not the secure.
Yeah, kept securely, right. So that would be my suggestion.
I, I support your suggestion.
And I would further, since I'm on a roll, saying the last sentence. Protected devices designed to be used as safeguards against illegal entry and vandalism will be installed as appropriate. So those are my ads.
So, um, what do you think of safeguards and deterrence?
Safeguards and deterrence, I'll go with that. Anybody have any more comments?
No.
Okay. Do you have that, Nancy? I'll give it to you. I'll give it to Nancy. I'll give it to, I'll edit for you. So all in favor of the slightly revised policy?
Aye.
Now you can move on to the...
So can I just, are the blue edits, are the, all of these edits what you guys talked about the last meeting?
Did somebody...
Those are yours.
Yeah, I said I would, the last meeting said I would do that.
Oh, that, okay, okay. Thank you. So now I'll make a motion to approve the Emergency Closings Policy?
Why is this yellow, just because that was edited?
That was the change.
Okay.
Unless, of course, we want to get rid of pronouns, gender-based pronouns. Can you go with their designate? That's what I'm saying, like, if we go with their, like...
Their is not grammatical.
I think that's the whole thing.
It's future, like, the way we are in this day and age.
I will not accept it. When there's a new chair, you can change it.
I second that.
It's just the thing.
I'm working.
Right? Am I right?
No.
Am I right?
Well, you used to be.
I'm not right anymore.
It's accepted now, unfortunately, newspapers and such.
Just moving away from the by that, the judge by that.
Okay. What do you guys want to do?
I want a their. Sounds good.
You could just take out, take the order and just put superintendent or...
Strunk and Wagner are rolling in there crazy. So we're saying the superintendent or their designate?
Or designate.
Or designate, that's okay, that's okay. Or designate. Okay? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally?
Make a motion to, to, um, accept the Facility Naming Policy. So what changed here?
Facility naming?
I don't think we changed anything.
There should be a comma here, after further.
So the amended 213 is just the anticipation of voting it today?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I guess it should say reaffirmed or something, that?
Well, I'm going to...
Is it amended, are we amending?
I'm going to tweak it.
Aren't you supposed to do this at the last meeting?
I decided actually we do it tonight, so. Any second on that?
No. Second.
So I have three minor edits. In the third paragraph at the end, it should be, committee members may not initiate a naming request during their terms of office, because it's plural members. In the fourth paragraph, members of the community, blah, biddy, blah, who wish to have a school committee consider naming or renaming, should make such requests, plural in writing, to the chair. It's not necessarily to say the chair of the committee, because it's implied.
So, I have one. It escapes me. What is the rationale for having committee members not initiate their naming request? And if we thought that there were some...
Nepotism?
No, not, I understand being the, the target of that request, but if a school committee member identified a community person who we wanted to recognize, what, what is inappropriate about that?